Okay. Welcome everyone to our May 4th start of the meeting. May 4th meeting. And we would like to have learned, anybody who would like to address the board before we adjourn the closing session? Please, we have one more.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Christy O'Perry. I'm a teacher over at Lawrence Sullivan School. And as you know, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. And for Teacher Appreciation Week, we sure would like to welcome our practice competitive wages and benefits. Hopefully, we will be right to start. First, we're going to talk about the bus charter shortage. I don't know if you've heard about sites experiencing some shortage, but we sure have. And I'm also wondering what other positions we are shorted in. It seems to be getting worse and not better. Police director of our main team offers competitive wages and benefits to all employees. How else can you attract new public employees and change the situation?
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there anyone else who should address the board?
Yes, we have two virtuals. First up is Michelle Orban.
Hi, Michelle.
Good evening, President Freitas, members of the board, Dr. Washer, and live audience members currently. I want to thank you for opening up the school board meetings for this dual way, for both live and virtual presentations. I'd also like to ask you to give consideration in giving direction to negotiations to consider salary and benefits, language on no-tel days allowing members to take time for family issues such as emergencies, moving our children to college, and things like their college graduations. This would show respect for your teachers and their families who, as you know, and as many of you, have helped family members in our district with being part of the district family. We'd also ask for middle school department chair compensation, preschool teachers on a salary schedule. And we hope that you give direction to bargaining with the teachers and LUSD to make these things happen. We look forward to coming and resolving the 2019-20 contract. Thank you.
And we have one more.
Next, I am Kimberly Freiber.
Hi, Kimberly.
President Freitas, I do not see Kimberly on the board.
Okay. And then the other conference is here, Kimberly. She's taken advantage of that. If there's no further comments, then we will adjourn.
All right, welcome everybody. Welcome to the return of in-person meeting. Glad to see everyone here. There is a notice that says you're welcome video here on the briefing board that asks you to be careful about speaking because the owl is super sensitive and will howl on the worldwide web. Well called. All senior board members are here in person that the record so reflects and very glad to have them. We're joined by our student representatives, Arianna Galvance from Davis High School. Very good. And remotely we have Jack Suri, Apollonia Lutet, and she is substitute student for William Childs for a boy in high school. Jack Suri, do they have her on line? We are not standing here yet. Arianna, would you please lead us in the flag, please?
Ready. I led the leaders to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic of this land, mission, under God, with the flow, letter of King Anheuser-Schroff.
Thank you. This is our May 4 meeting, so in addition to it being our Star Wars meeting, we also have a birthday portion for them. That is, today is his birthday. So can we all have a round of happy birthday, Gordon? I will lead with that. So we start with, "Happy Birthday to you, Happy Birthday to you, Happy Birthday to you." If anybody comes to the board meeting, I'm their representative. Very, very good. All right. Also, another member of the Lloyd family, so Batty Chong, who has passed away earlier this week. So he was a 10th grader and had crisis program, had plausible school. Our thoughts and prayers go out to Batty and Sammy. If we could have a brief moment of silence. The report out from both sessions, the board has nothing to report, no action was taken. Board recognitions. All right, fascinating details because we got a great bunch of recognitions for tonight. Oh, this is good.
That's okay.
I was going to get into the board recognition.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. First of all, I want to thank everyone for their cooperation and work in making tonight, as Mr. Prigus put it, hybrid model of our board meeting in action. Thank you and welcome to our in-person attendees. It's very nice to see you here. Appreciate you taking the time to come out and be with us in person. Welcome to our virtual attendees as well. And I want to thank our staff, Michelle Armstrong, Valerie McPhee, our tech staff, for making all this happen, Edith Holbert, getting everything set up. Thank you so much for all your work. If we do have folks out in the lobby, I don't know if we do now, but if there are folks out in the lobby who do want to speak, make a public comment, we will bring you, let you know when it's time to come in. Valerie McPhee is out there and she'll give the signal. So we may have a little clause here and there if anybody does show up for public comments. So thank you so much. I want to thank the Rees staff for our recent visit. Our PLC visit, Mr. McGregor and I went over to Rees to visit and it was just fantastic. The only word I think of when I go to school is joy. It is just so joyous to see our students out and about, playing, learning, laughing, singing, being together and learning from their teachers. I want to acknowledge the teaching staff at Rees for just incredible, incredible work. It is masterful what we saw with the distance learning students at home, the in-person students in front of teachers. Not only were teachers managing both realms, but they were having them interact together, which was quite amazing. That not only were they addressing the distance learner students as part of the class, but they were involving the students together. Those who were in person and at home were actually working together in groups and interacting together. And it was masterful. So thank you to Rees for that visit. I also want to make a clarification to our community. I know that there's some confusion out there about next year and what distance learning will be next year. The current distance learning model that we have in place now is for this year only. It does not extend to next school year. So for next school year, if families are interested in being remote, we do have choices. We have the new digital academy. We have our independence program and we have Valley Robotics Academy, which is kind of a hybrid in itself that can offer remote as well. So I just wanted to make sure that our community knows that the current model of distance learning option is not going to extend past this school year. I also want to let board know that we do have public, we have been in communication with our public that they want, there are folks who want to make comments about graduation, high school graduation. So I'm just going to ask that you be flexible about when they do that. It is not specifically noted and stated on the agenda. However, it could be part of our report that we give on the essay on how we're handling the health pandemic. So there may be members of the public virtually who signed up for the public comment and would make their comments there. So because they had to sign up ahead of time, just please be flexible and if they make their comments at that point or during the report, hopefully that'll be okay. And yes, Mr. Prigus, we are looking forward to the recognition. Thank you.
You know what? I was so excited. Thank you, Dr. Washer. Thank you for clarifying that about the distance learning academy goes forward. I was so excited about the recognition that I forgot to introduce our helpers here tonight. We have the administrative assistant of the board, Michelle Armstrong. We have Michael's also with us for technology, but our IT technician, extraordinary Andrew, is here running the system. I totally appreciate it. Paul Brady, thank you very much tonight for helping. And Valerie, in the lobby, thank you, Valerie. Board recognition. This is really a great time of year that we get to recognize so many great things that happen. And especially in a year that was unusual with this one, with so many different challenges. But seeing the accomplishments that our students and staff have made, it really brings quietness to our hearts. So we're really excited that we got a bunch of recognition here tonight. And Mr. Homquist, you have our regional science bowl competition award winners and you can see a lot.
Thank you very much, President Prigus, members of the board, and Dr. Washer. I think that many of our meetings we get on are regarding our students. You'll hear from me later when we give an update on secondary divisions, dedication, so many people who are born into our kids and for the success of what they're happening in five different ways. And Science Bowl has a long tradition of doing just that. It's enduring. People have an opportunity because we have great people alongside them. Help them in those opportunities, lead them through that, and then they do it. They perform and they produce. They've done that once again. Very pleased that you introduced Principal tantrum. We'll introduce his coach, his memory and students who are recognizing tonight. So with that.
Thank you, Jeff. Welcome, Principal tantrum. Mr. Prigus, President Prigus, members of the board, Dr. Washer, and you, Mr. Homquist. As we recognize our students and everything else, and it's great to have such a few students in and out every day. It's okay every year. And I'm also going to recognize, and sorry I'm making it all long, because when you talk about involved students, although we've had a more involved student body representative and either on our campus and in the school halls, quite like, I'm going to recognize her as well. We have to meet the student government many times and good student leadership sort of brings out a lot of it. As we mentioned with our science Olympia team, Science Bowl, we have a strong reputation, but it's not just we have a reputation because we run it, which we have. It started out way from day one. When the expectations are set from day one of we're going to make it rigorous and we're going to push ourselves, what we're going to achieve, it's not what came about back in the years of success. You know, day one and start, and it's been able eventually because of dedication of our coaches and our students. And this year in particular, you mentioned with our science Olympia, very challenging because last month, 90% of our school year had been distance learning at home, a lot of it online, obviously. And that makes challenges even harder when you're going to compete against somebody in other schools and other teams. And all you've been able to do so far is really this type of interaction that we have. So here's some of that. So recognize our team. Introduce members of our team and give us a little bit about what they've accomplished this year. Hi, Natalie.
Nice to see you all again.
Great to see you.
Well, first of all, I wanted to say a little bit about what Science Bowl is. When I took over doing Science Bowl in 2006, I didn't know that it was going to be a blog term. But it is in all sciences and math. In biology, chemistry, physics, earth science, astronomy, energy. And the students get amazingly well-rounded backgrounds. What we were just talking about in the lobby is that when we study, we have to study at the beyond high school level. We study what they're going to do in college or in graduate school in order to be successful at competing. And anyway, the U.S. Department of Energy puts on National Science Bowl. They write all the questions. And this year, of course, the format is different. Usually we're in, they had a competition with buzzers. And who doesn't love that competition? But this time, what happened is that we have the teams in the morning. We just all have the exact same questions. We were doing it virtually. And nobody knew how anybody else did. Sure enough, in the, what we call the afternoon, the top four
Sure enough, in the, what we call it, afternoon, the top four teams baited into that round and then those teams had their own round. And we didn't actually know whether we won or not. I mean, we didn't know. And so then we found out that we baited into the findings. And we were pretty excited. We told you, I think we all yelled. At least I yelled when I drowned out everybody else. So people were excited and our team ended up coming in second place in the Sankey, the Central Valley Competition. And I, you know, I have to say that, you know, nothing is done by one person or whatever. We rely on the teachers to do the material that they do at their level to give the students the foundation that they need to be able to succeed. We depend on our site administrators to fill out all those form. And when the Department of Energy can find out the form, he is happy to email them again. Thank you, Mr. Sanstrom. In addition to that, I have to say, you know, my whole family, our life, actually, that my children know that on Sunday afternoons, we don't do family activities because we have Science Bowl. And so they're very supportive. In addition to that, I don't actually coach by myself. My husband, Ron Henry, who's sitting there, who is entirely focused on doing what's best for students, although the time spends an enormous amount of time doing whatever needs to be done. And so this last year, when my husband had been fortunate, our accident, talked to the students and I said, well, you know, he does well with it. And these young men stepped up to the plate. And they did the things that my husband would have done each week for his practice. And I truly appreciate it and admire that. We had a lot of rental support. I also want to mention Luanne Casey, who is a friend of mine. But in addition to that, she was in school with my daughter. And people said, well, why are you doing that? And she said, because other people do this for my children. Now I'm going to spend the time and effort to do it for the next generation. And I really admire that. She just did all kinds of extra things. And so I wanted to personally put her name out there and say how much I appreciated her total support of the program. Not only does she support our program, but she's also looking at part of the Central Valley Core Team that helps put Science Bowl on. So without further ado, if I forgot anybody, I apologize. So many people that they've been our lifetime. But I make sure that a lot of the parents really help out all of the time too. I would like to introduce an array of most extraordinary young men. Okay, extraordinary young men, you have to. And I want to say that every day we practice together with an awful joy as a coach to have because they are not only, okay, they're intellectually brilliant, but don't tell them that because you know you should never tell children that they're smart. But you have to couple that with determination, hard work and all of those other things to be successful. And on top of that, they are kind, considerate and thoughtful. And I truly, I think they get tired of me thanking them every, every practice. But yeah, they're great. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce them and I would like them to be able to tell you because this is our opportunity to reach in this success of our students and let them tell you a little bit about their piece of expertise in the team.
That'd be very nice.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Now that you thought you were going to have a short meeting, but you could.
If we gave up on that, it'd be a long, capital D, it'd be a long time.
Who would like to go? Okay. The team, join our team and just since this last year, fresh, oh, I'm not going to tell them what grade level you're in and all the students.
My name's Viti Armando, I'm a freshman at Toke. My favorite area is Science Bowl or Biology and Math. And this year, I really enjoyed learning from Natalie about my spending career at Science Bowl.
Very nice, thank you.
Who's more?
My name is Mark. I'm a senior at Toke. And my specialty is chemistry and science. I'm learning every Sunday, clearly I want some light, but I'm not sure.
Very nice.
We were all happy that he answered that little break and start question. Good job.
My name is Ben Lee and I'm a junior at Toke. I specialize in chemistry and earth science. I can't put into words on how much I've learned every Sunday going to Natalie's house. It's been an instructive experience, quote unquote.
Very interesting. Hi, I'm Justin Monk and I specialize in physics and physics science at my high school. I have to say, although I'm going to be majoring in economics at UCLA latest year, really did enjoy this last five years or four years outside school. I came into high school not really knowing a lot of foundational science or anything. Yeah, not knowing a lot. And I really look around this room and I see so many of my past teachers from all around my life. It's really, it's really inspiring. And I really did appreciate these last four years and everything I've learned from everyone in this room. Thank you so much, Mrs. Henry.
Hello, my name is Simon. I'm a senior at Toke. An expert in education, a major in science. And I guess I specialize in biology, physics or science bowl. I just want to take this time to, you know, thank Mr. Mrs. Henry for, you know, being so dedicated. Kind of been an amazing experience living at your house every Sunday for six years. So that's just been great. I also want to thank Assistant Harman for moderating the session. You don't get enough credit for all the help you have to us do so. Thank you. Lastly, this is kind of unrelated to Science Bowl, but thank you, Mr. Porter, for writing me a letter of recommendation. Anyway, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Justin. I'm sure that you're going to go to that thing and get to write it.
Well, I wanted to comment on that. Did you dress something like Mr. Friggin?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You made like a passing comment in class about like, just the day was the day before you left, right? About like, dressed like Mr. Porter did.
Oh, wait.
I remember.
I can recall, I wore the Ray Bans and like the back of the game, long shirt.
I already prepared that and I still appreciate it.
And you still got the letter from. Well, I definitely, this is what a great group and we are so excited. Y'all are premiering. Congratulations on that free job.
Thank you. I do want to thank, just real quickly, and see, I did, I should have recognized you. You have given thousands and thousands of hours and given so much of yourselves to the science education and science Olympia and Science Bowl. And even though your daughter left, it's here, it's trying again. You volunteered and we have a lot of parents who volunteered for the competition. Thank you.
If I think there's a little more you guys are going to do, because you promised you would. Yes, Mr. Porter?
Yes, mine's for all of them. Especially for Mrs. Henry that worked with you both. And you were, you know, Ken is a rookie teacher. And you did so much for me. You ventured me to my department head for peers, you know, me when they needed to. The way that you taught helped me become a better teacher. Obviously, I'm not your standard, but at your level, you were incredible. I'm just trying to somewhat get to that. But you're such an inspiration and plus a joy of the year. You're a great president and a great manager. I cannot tell you what joy it was worth this year and how much impact it had on my life. So thank you very much. And to all the Toke boys, thank you so much. I know that you put in a lot of hard work and it's incredible to be able to help you a lot.
Very nice. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Did we hang?
You can have the ass to say that you just took.
I have this.
Well, first I'd like to say that of the five boys standing here, I've been standing there, four of you I've known for a very long time, going back to middle school and forth. And I'd like to, Ken, first of all, they didn't recognize you. I kept thinking, Ken was on the team. You've grown like two feet. So I don't know what happened in the last year, but you've gotten so far. I want to say thank you for sticking with it. You all started in science Olympia way back when. And a lot of them that have been standing there started in middle school kind of in Science Bowl. Mrs. Henry, you don't remember that, they opened up to middle school teams. And a lot of them were there soaking up the electronic older students and figuring out what their area would be and who they would have to jockey against if they were a biology person or a chemistry person. And learning how to interact with their own peers. And so there's a, there's a human emotional component that goes with it as well. It's science and it's competition and it's brainiac type things. There's also interpersonal communications that are learned and kind of interact. And I think we don't talk about that enough. And so I want to say thank you to all of you boys who stick me out. Susan, hours and hours of years and climate and energy. They all know it, we know it as parents when our children go through your program. There isn't anything like it in the area. I wish more students had the opportunity to sit in your living room on a Sunday and get the downstairs, when you get eaten on the leather couch, where you would be told not to put the juice in the living room, but you did. They all know what I'm talking about, don't you? Yes, if you don't, yes. You don't want to be the person with ink on the couch. And so thank you for your time and energy. And Ron, I know it started with just, they were going to take just a cupboard from the garage. And then it moved to just maybe just a table. And then pretty much you didn't have a garage at some point. It was in the classroom and it's, it's my fault that the mini gate tank. So thank you for all your energy and time. And thank you to all the middle school, elementary and high school teachers that put the foundation and laid it because without a strong science background and all the public discipline and all the careers from their very own elementary and high school science teachers, you really haven't placed. So you guys came in ready to go and Susan and her team was ready to take you to the next level. Congratulations and enjoy. I think everybody's the same, yeah. No, Ken's junior, a junior and freshman. Ken, you're a junior. A freshman. So congratulations and enjoy your next year. We're looking for the rest of our game next year. How about a girl? What a girl, when there used to be girls. Well, typically we do and I mean, though, when we made it to the national fair, we debate to me, why did you do that? Why did you pay for all of this? Just live on the year.
Very good. Another knowledge from the board. Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, I'm very proud and pleased to have met all of you and watched you grow. There is a huge difference between a freshman boy and a senior young man. Not just physically, but also maturity wise and so forth. When you talk, they tend to see a little. It always reminds me when I look at you guys. An administrator asked Mrs. Henry one time, what's your secret, you know, how do you do this? And I think he was interested in starting in this high school. Susan just looked and emphasized it. Hard work. And he kind of went, oh. So that hard work will pay off. And I think what you did, not only what you learned, but how you learned it and those kinds of lessons will keep with you all throughout your life. So best wishes to you, congratulations, and it's been a pleasure knowing you. Don't be a stranger when you're home on Christmas break or something, stop by and say hi. Congratulations.
David's by there. Listen up.
Yeah. Congratulations, Susan. This is your fifteenth year. I recall 2006, you said you started this. Amazing. Since I've been on the board, I've seen you here most of the time. Again, it takes a lot of chemistry, you know, just like a coach. In the coaching field, you would call these gentlemen boot chippers. They're the top of the line academically, determined that they have and willing to work hard. It takes a lot of work, what you did, and it takes a lot of guidance. And the guidance comes from your mentors, not only Susan, but she introduced a whole other group that helped in that regard. And you guys will be successful because you have some good goals already. I've heard some from the seniors at UCLA, San Diego State, Sunday University. Again, you have a junior and a freshman, it's good to see them. Thank you.
Very nice, thank you, Mr. Fallow. Other comments from the board. This is Natalie. You don't have to tell us what a great guy your husband is and how dedicated he is to education. We absolutely positively know that and we particularly appreciate him. We appreciate you, Principal Sanstrom and your entire team. Great job once again. Thank you very much. Hold on. It's going to be greater. Can we get a poll here? We have another recognition, is that correct?
Do indeed. President Friggin, members of the board, Dr. Washer, thank you very much. It's a wonderful thing to see culminating work of our students, putting off their career at the, it's like in the science school, but to show everything they've learned and how much they've accomplished. So what a wonderful tribute to the work that the teachers and coaches throughout the district do. And we wish you. I'd like to introduce Mary Flora. She has been teaching since 1985, thirty-six years in the building. But she is currently a gate coach and the gate program is responsible for pretty beginning the math tournament every year. She's done an incredible job. As you know, many of you attend that event every year and even with a panel of men, she led the charge and there were a number of schools and teachers that really went above and beyond to make the event very, very special. So I'd like to introduce Mary, who is with us virtually. So I'll turn it over to her and she will speak to the achievement of these young people, the recognized teachers. And there are numbers of them that I will take to their schools that they'll have as a keepsake for the, for their work in the tournament. So thank you very much for recognizing these students today. Mary, take it away, please.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Can you hear me pretty well there? The audio on this end is a little bit sketchy.
Yeah, you can hear the louds there.
Perfect, thank you so much. President Friggin, Dr. Washer and members of the board. And Mr. McGregor already kind of laid it out. As many of you know, and many of you have joined in at the awards ceremony, the gate department has held for the last ten years, say for last year, a district math tournament. And despite all of the hardships this year, we had several teachers who persisted and persevered to meet with students either before school or after school all year long to keep math thinking going. This culminated in our virtual tournament this year on April tenth. And just to remind you that in a normal year, we have between sixteen and twenty-five five-person teams competing in both an individual and team event at Toke High School in April. I sent a copy of the competition problems to Mr. McGregor. If any of you would like to work to solve those and see the challenges that these fourth through sixth graders tackle and the mathematical thinking that goes along. And so while the gate department promotes and encourages this opportunity, any student who enjoys math can join the math team. can join the math team at any of the schools that host one. Um and so, I am honored tonight to acknowledge especially those teachers and students who persevered through weekly practices and bi-monthly competitions. Just as with Science Olympiad, Math Olympiad, these students compete in Math Olympiads all during the year. And they compete globally with students as well. So, in addition to working each week with their teachers, they compete five times during the school year with students from all over the globe. At last count, Moons had, I think, seven hundred and eighteen thousand students participating in the Math Olympiads. And that's why I think it's so important to continue this in our district for uh, to help our students continue those, the math thinking. Um so, this was, as you know, a most interesting and unique and challenging year. But these teachers and students persevered. These teachers, there, we had people from, we had teachers from Oakwood, Reese, and Manlio met all year with their teams. Reese, led by Kim Nichol and Jennifer Swartwood. And Manlio Silva, led by Julie Wallace, ultimately had their teams compete virtually on Saturday, April tenth. Yep, Saturday. These students gave up four hours of their Saturday. Instead of watching cartoons or playing video games, they came to compete in math. It was amazing to see their math thinking in action and to hear their collaboration during the team event and breakout sessions. Mrs. Heberly spoke about the collaboration needed for Science Olympiad, and this is where it begins. The kids have to talk and collaborate in teams to solve those math problems. So, this is one of the twenty-first century learning skills. And I, I'm proud to be able to continue, have teachers continue this in our district. These amazing students showed perseverance, responsibility, determination, and an eagerness to be critical thinkers. And these are traits that will carry them far into the future. So, now for the winners. And I know I'm, I'm going to announce the top three teams and then the top three students. So, third place team event went to Manlio Silva, blue, uh team two. And that was Gianna Zumout, Mia Barclay, Caleb Balar Doblados, Andress Zumout, and Janessa Vergessi. And second place team went to Reese School. And that was Lucas King, Dylan Burt, Sean Frank, Allison Flanders, Gianna Caparali, Luca Quantoni, and Ca- Callan Lachland. And you heard from uh Reese earlier with Dr. Wasser. And so, I'm, Reese has, has some wonderful things going on. And that's thanks to Mrs. Nichol and Mrs. Swartwood to continue that math there too. And now, for the first place team was Manlio Silva, team one, and that was Jaden Singh. And Jaden accomplished something that most uh students aren't able to accomplish uh at the math tournament. And that is, he had ten questions out of ten correct, a perfect score. And that's quite unusual. He's a fun kid. Jaden was just a kick. Lawrence Asia was also on the team. Diola Adarami, um Ziad Alujami, and Ranmiela O'Ghana. And that was our first place team winner. And for the individual event, in third place was Lawrence Asia. In second place was Ranmiela O'Ghana. And in first place, you probably guessed it, yes, Mr. Jaden Singh. Since the tournament was virtual, medals were handed out in person. And thank you so much for sharing the pictures of these students who persevered all year long. I, I just love seeing them up there. Um and for the twenty twenty-two school year, the math tournament is going to be held in April. And we are looking forward to having some of you, once again, join us at the medal ceremony for our next set of mathletes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. And we would very much look forward to be in the medal ceremony once again. Uh you have the colleagues on the board, uh Mr. Neely.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I tell you, I was uh one of the first men. We had to load up, give you five. Mr. McEwan, you and I both went to that one. And uh it's amazing, absolutely amazing. Uh the time that our, our teachers and coaches put in. I tell you, it was just driving to, to the blood and stuff. Thank you so much to everybody. Congratulations to our members.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Uh Mr. Neely, sir.
I, 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 uh, it was that we had several of my more stock schools involved. Want to congratulate you guys for that, that showing that you made for us. Thank you.
Very, very nice. Other comments from the board? Mr. Heberly?
I just wanted to, once again, uh tell the students, congratulations for their extra efforts and extra work. And that also goes out to the teachers for their extra work and time. And uh maybe, once again, uh you came through and in trying times, had the competition continue. So, thank you for your work. Once again, thank you for everyone, and congratulations.
Other comments from the board? Uh Barry, I, I just add all of my colleagues and their comments. Uh no matter what you do in life, having a sound foundation in math is absolutely huge and irreplaceable. So, uh to all the students, okay, I'm still uh, these, congratulations on a job well done representing this district in such a great way. So, and Barry, thank, thank you for all your hard work and uh everything that goes on behind the scenes. Thank you very, very much, and congratulations. Thank you, Mr. McGregor. All right. Um good, I have answered the poll here, please. Been so long since we've done this.
I know.
That's on tonight's agenda is our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Teacher of the Year. And the idea is to have your anchors, wreck the personnel, do uh, bring on several.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Well, thank you, board members. Thank you, Dr. Wasser. It is very exciting to be here tonight. And I really think that Mr. Freitas, it's a hand, I don't know the mail, when he said, made a force star. We can find a star. This is just one of the stars in this meeting. Um personnel is really fortunate to be a part of this process. I mean, we facilitated, we helped the committee so that we can walk them through this process. And then ultimately, we get here with the recommendations and the selection. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce Principal U. M. Young from Lodi Middle.
Here. This is cool, being here, I gotta say. I've been here in a while and it's so, I'm grateful to be back. The end of the year, we're first. I know, the first one's really cool. You know, oftentimes, when people are asked who their most memorable teacher is, uh growing up. They often mention a lovely kindergarten teacher or a hilarious preschool teacher that they had. But middle school teachers, overlooked. And middle school is such a short period of time, and yet it's one of the most crucial uh times in an adolescent's life. I'm sure most parents of middle school uh children like myself uh would agree that these are special years. And it takes a very special person to teach middle school. In fact, I've been told before, you have to be crazy to work in a middle school. And that might be so a little bit. We are a little bit of a crazy breed. Uh you have to be a very caring and nurturing uh teacher to be with all those new sub-graders. Yet still fully cool and engaging and entertaining. Uh it's all the eighth grader. And really be able to work through all those happy teenager kind of drama times uh that kids have at that age is not an easy job. And I'm very fortunate to have such a wonderful group of teachers at Lodi Middle. And one in particular, who's standing here next to me tonight. When she first interviewed her position twenty years ago. Uh we didn't choose her. Uh hard to believe. It was kind of like, who would be Sam Bowie over Michael Jordan? Um going to be. Uh who does that? But luckily, as fate would have it, because she loves that story. We love, we love talking about that story. But as fate would have it, um our Sam Bowie choice did not face a challenge. Uh which she did. And her talents are many. She's a skillful English teacher. She's a motivator. She's a caretaker, uh to her students and family. She's a mentor to all of her colleagues, uh especially the main interns, including one of the interns of one of our board members here tonight. Um she's created unforgettable memories uh for hundreds of students. That she's taken on field trips to colleges, bigger avenues, universities, uh Washington DC trips, um plays. She's formed a lifetime family bonds with numerous foreign exchange students that she had um hosted in her own home. She's a masterful baker, probably a pitch, send it only to the man that's sitting over there. Should we say? And a true leader. She is a champion for her students, the school, and our district. And for me, as an administrator, the measure of a great teacher is asking myself what I want my child in this teacher's classroom. And both of my children have been fortunate enough to have Mrs. Taylor as a teacher. And I'm so grateful to get it. So, ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to present this year's Lodi Unified School District's Teacher of the Year to Mrs. Trina Taylor.
I've known Cassandra twenty years, as she said, and I, she's not always uh very emotional with me. And so, it's really nice to hear all of that. Um I want to thank everybody here, first of all, for taking the time to interview this. It's still a complete surprise to me. Uh I don't, I don't feel like I deserve this anymore than anybody else. I have, uh I'm the great portion of looking at amazing teachers. And I hope to continue to do that for many, many more years. But like Cassandra, I think twenty years ago, I, I interviewed for a job. I got called for, for an interview and I wasn't living in the area. It was for a school that I thought I'd never heard of, but it turns out it just had a new name. I went to see her out, so. And uh you know, I, I didn't think I'd want a middle school. I actually had just recruited, I was going to be an intern. I didn't know anything, frankly, of teaching at all. Uh when they hired me, and like she said, I was the first choice. They hired me, um I panicked, I, I, I was one study. And I am grateful I got to work with Cassandra as an English teacher and actually with uh Trina Moore. Both of them eventually became my administrators. And I, I love the, the circle we've been, um where she, she was my leader back as an English teacher. And now she is my leader again as my administrator. I'm just grateful to have gone through that path. Uh I, I hope that my students, she's right. I think that middle school is the age where maybe not every student looks back and remembers that middle school teacher that made a difference. I hope that for some, even if they don't remember me personally, I hope that they do uh survive their middle school year a little smoother. Maybe because of being in my classroom. I really do think it's an age where kids need to learn to be confident and be nurtured. That's my goal. Again, thank you. I, I still, like, it's a surprise. I think that every year, I'm still trying to learn. Every, every time I teach a lesson, I try to think about what's different. And every summer, I think about, about how I connect with kids better because they change and I change. And uh this is right, it's a way to think that. This is important. Thank you all very, very much.
Okay. I got people's worst of the thousands from the board. Mr. Heberly? Uh I really enjoy that uh you're a middle school teacher. Also, my mother's forty years plus in teaching uh was in middle school. Started in Woodbridge Middle School, then went to, uh, school, sorry. Don't say you're a. But in middle school is where she ended up retiring. My sister was a middle school teacher. It is an absolute critical time for those kids. And I always tell them, when we were, when we were doing Science Olympiad and we're setting the kids up for the competition. I've had to know all of other schools and everything. And what you do in middle school sets you up for not only high school, but for the future. And uh I think real positive adults in their life. It matters so much to them. And obviously, you're one of those. So, thank you for your work.
Appreciate it, guys.
Very nice. Thank you, Mr. Heberly. Any other comments from the board, Mr. Nava?
Yes, thank you, Taylor, for being in that area. And I, I started, actually, I'm not going to school, but I'm in junior high, seven, nine. And I, I separated with, with the age of those youngsters. And you are a completely a guidance person. You know what? They retain a lot of that learning. Some of mine uh come back in this many years and they, they still remember things that I told them and gave them advice. I'm sure some of yours will do the same. Thank you. Congratulations.
Other comments from the board? Mr. Neely? Thank you, Mr. President.
A middle school teacher. Boy, I tell you, that's gotta be tough. I was a sixth grader teacher, right? And that's where that big change happens, I tell you. They come into sixth grade, they begin with you the year as kids. Then all of a sudden, at the end of the year, everything's changed. Then they go to you. Thank you so much. Being, being in that environment, you have an Excel like you have. Thank you so much for everything you do, bringing it to our district and it a big help for our kids.
Mr. Taylor, how are you?
Thank you.
I think this award is so well deserved to you. There's such great things about your classroom that you do. I love when you're making your comments and you look at reflection. How important it is, that's super important to you. I'm glad you're always seeing that you can do some stuff. Trying to use that even now in the move forward. Or the teaching to your level where you are, or have, is hard. I'm like Michelangelo, you can picture it. You can try to do that every day. And uh you're at that level where it's really incredible. But back to what's next. You, you put, that is the biggest part, I think, of me, I appreciate you. You have a lot of teaching and you consider it a great profession. And you exemplify everything that is wonderful about our teachers. And also, congratulate your husband too. He's a great individual. Your family is incredible. You represent, represent the impossible about the culture of teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Other comments from the board? Mr. Kneadstam?
Uh congratulations, first of all. Uh my, my teaching career was high school. And myself, I'm still, most of my colleagues always considered middle school as the black hole of education and nobody's opinion. So, uh people like you that, that really made a difference in kids' lives. So, good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
And Vice President, Ms. Portland?
Thank you, um, Mr. Freitas. Um, true congratulations. They tell you all the time, you're amazing. Uh although you were humble, but you're unassuming, you come in day after day and do the job um of, of many. Um and you've done an amazing job with many students. I provided three middle schools in my house, right? You know? I don't know how you, how any middle school teacher does it, let alone a high school teacher. Um thank you for being such a formidable leader and mentor when you were a department head, which I hope you will be again soon. Um thank you for all the time you've given to the, to helping the students. Um I hear nicely how wonderful you are and how um they want to go out and be like you. Um so, I appreciate it. Um to you, I would say, uh we should have been the best. And thank you for staying with us for twenty years, the hope that I had of twenty anymore. Thank you so, so much. And it's, it's been a pleasure meeting you and students like your daughter and all the other members. It's really good. Thank you.
Well, there was more. I, I enjoyed my colleagues and all their comments. Uh like Mr. Heberly, uh my mom taught forty years. Quite frankly, I wasn't good enough to be a teacher, so I headed off another grade. Um my sister taught, she was part of my sister to teach middle school. My cousins all became teachers and I was the black sheep. With a different path. But uh it, it is said that when you teach, two people learn. And uh, no, she. And what you have done in a district of great teachers, your recognition means so much to all of us. So congratulations on this board. Very well deserved. Unfortunately, tonight's meeting is recorded, so your Christmas merry fact statements are recorded for posterity and can be transcribed for your evaluation. You're an excellent representative of a great profession and a great teacher. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay. But wait, there's more. We have a proclamation and recognition for the Day of the Teacher, which is May twelve. And here to read is Vice President.
Thank you, President. Before the Board of Education of the Loda Unified School District of the County of San Martin, State of California, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas California Education Code thirty-seven-two-two-two designates the second Wednesday, May, as the Day of the Teacher. Through recognition of the dedicated professionals entrancing with fulfilling the mission of education to prepare our students for the future. And whereas providing quality education to our young people continues to be our greatest challenge in education as well as our most vital responsibility. And whereas stability of our communities in both good and challenging times rests in large part on the public schools maintaining secure and safe environments for learning, achieving and acting as a safety net for many children and their families. And whereas the Loda Unified Board of Education recognizes the quality of all students' educational experiences begins to begin heavily and virtually upon the quality of their teachers. Because the influence of a good teacher continues long after school days are only memories. And whereas California teachers have not only historically shaped the education system of the state, but continue to take a leading role in efforts to improve education for all. And whereas the theme of the thirty-ninth annual Day, California Day of the Teacher is California Teachers Pupulating Minds and Healing Hearts. Now therefore, the Board of Education proclaims Wednesday, May twelve, two thousand twenty-one, as California's Day of the Teacher in Loda Unified School District. By the fourth of May, two thousand twenty-one, with President Ron Kreis.
To me, all of this. And I think we have a proclamation for you to share. Thank you to all the great teachers. And it is obviously kind of a sentiment for the job that you all do. And we look forward to celebrating over the twelfth of May. And great. We have the proclamation, and that is the recognition of School Nutrition Employee Week. And for that, the board of the board, Mr. Ward.
Mr. President. The Board of Education of the Loda Unified School District of the County of San Martin, State of California. Our proclamation is this is School Nutrition Employee Week, May third through the seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Around the California Department of Education's third week of May third through the seventh, two thousand twenty-one, nutrition, school nutrition employee week. And whereas dedicated and confident committed men and women to prepare and serve our school meals, our tasks of theory to nutrition standards, navigating student food allergies, following strict food safety protocols, providing nutrition education all while offering service for this month. And whereas the sheer school nutrition professionals rose to the challenge and without hesitation, just the meal service hours provide grab and go options. The expanded services of children continue to have dependable access to healthy food during the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas research shows that school aged children will experience higher levels of agitation, nurse visits, and more challenges than children receiving a well-balanced diet. And whereas the Board of Education of the Loda Unified School District wishes to join with the Department of California of Education in giving recognition to and expressing appreciation to the valuable employees who manage their good work in behalf of the district's children. And therefore, be of resolve, Board of Education, Loda Unified School District, expresses its appreciation to nutrition service professionals, declares the week of May third through the seventh, two thousand twenty-one, as the School of Nutrition Employee Week in the Loda Unified School District. Led aside by our President, Ron Kreis, the head of the Loda Unified School District.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Congratulations. We have a proclamation and recognition for a classified school employee week. And if you read it, it is birthday boy himself.
Mr. President, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give this proclamation. Before the Board of Education of the Loda Unified School District of the County of San Martin, State of California, proclamation designating May sixteen, twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one as the Classified School Employee Week in Loda Unified School District. The third full week of May has been designated Classified School Employee Week by the California State Legislature by the passage of Senate Bill fifteen fifty-two Campbell in eighteen eighty-six in recognition of the invaluable service classified school employees provided to California public schools. Whereas classified school employees are education support, professionals who continually strive for excellence in areas relative to the education community. And whereas classified employees support and enhance the educational process by assisting students and teachers transporting students, preparing official meals, making buildings, grounds, and performing technical, business, clerical, and secretarial functions. And whereas Loda Unified School District's classified employees provide our organization with specialized skills to contribute to the educational excellence in our schools and programs day in and day out in order to support and prepare our students for the twenty-first century. And whereas classified employees provide vital services that enable a Loda Unified School District to respond effectively to the needs of students and their family, teachers, administrators, and other support staff, and the needs of the greater community. Now therefore, Loda Unified School District Board of Education hereby recognizes and wishes to honor the contribution of the classified professionals to qualify quality education in the State of California and in Loda Unified School District and claims the week of May sixteen through twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one as the Classified Employees Week proclaimed on this fourth day of May. President Ron Kreis, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nava. Congratulations, school employees. We have also a proclamation and recognition of the School Principal's Day. And if you read it, it's Mr. Neely.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, last week, I was gonna be in the principal's office. Yeah, well, you know, I wasn't in the principal's office. I'm retired immediately after. Yes. I went to speak back to watch her about this. That's what I had to do, something for the principal. And she's cool. So I did, I said, let's get the day off. So that's how it happened. You guys had May first off. And yes, I'll take that. We also have a real Saturday. Okay, here we go. Proclamation. School Principal's Day, May first, two thousand twenty-one. Whereas principals set the academic tone of their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high grade notes standards, develop mission statements, set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational factors. And where principals are expected to be education missionaries, instructional leaders, assessment, assessment managers, driven to go with Public Relations Act for budget and house, facility managers, special program administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of young people, the most valuable resource we have. And so in one sentence. And whereas Loda Unified School District Board recognizes outstanding elementary, middle, and high school principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students as well as their exemplary contributions to the profession. And whereas educational leaders face many challenges in getting our young people. And it's through their perseverance and passion that Loda Unified School District continues to produce quality career roles. Now, therefore, be of resolve, the Board of Education joins the California Department of Education in starting School Principal's Day by taking this opportunity to recognize the hard work of the principals as we continue to immerse support and encourage, support, and recognize those who have a positive impact on our schools and the educational system in Loda Unified School District. Done by the Loda Unified School Board, by District Board of Education on Sports Day, May two thousand twenty-one, signed according to order, according to the board, and on for his presence. More relinquish. I tell you, I have so much confidence in our. That's gotta be one of the hardest jobs in the third industry. Because a lot of times when you see people, you're seeing angry people, you know? There's angry kids, angry students, angry teachers, angry parents. And then I notice Scott and Jeff are hard work, too. And they're expected, yeah. Well, thank you all very much for everything you do.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Very well done. And Eric, can you guess who we had, the construction supervisor also doing that duty? Where were our? We can't thank all of the school principals. Thank you very much. Next, we have a proclamation and recognition of National School Nurses Day. And to present this proclamation is Mr. Erbly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say before I start, I'm not only a proud father of a school teacher, I'm a proud father of a nurse. So it's appropriate that I read this. Before the Board of Education of the Loda Unified School District of the County of San Martin, State of California, proclamation, National School Nurse Day, which is May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. The theme for the school nurses for two thousand twenty-one is championing the whole student. Whereas students are the future. And by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school. And whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely net while in school setting. And whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has emphasized the essential role school nurses play in student health and academic success. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than one hundred years. And whereas school nurses address the home and community factors such as social determinants that impact children's health. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school, community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. Whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. And whereas school nurses are members of school-based teams such as school health services, biohors, IEPs, disaster, emergency planning to address the school population. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to be a positive difference for children every day. Therefore, be of resolve that the National Association of School Nurses celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere and their efforts to meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools. And I'm just gratitude to the nation's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn. And keeping principals and guardians at work, not just this National School Nurses Day, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Now, therefore, the Board of Education proclaims Wednesday, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, as National School Nurse Day in Loda Unified School District. This is signed on the fourth day of May, two thousand twenty-one, by Ron Kreis, President, Loda Unified School.
Mr. Erbly, and thank you, school nurses. Congratulations. And we are on proclamation, proclamation, and recognition of speech and language pathologists day. And if you read it, it's Mr. Kandax.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wonder why you choose one board member who at times slips back to look down on language to present a speech. Yeah, I'm a little bit, but I'll be my little bit. Wonder why. This proclamation is for December day, May eighteenth, as a speech, language, speech, language pathologist day in Loda Unified School District. Whereas speech and language disorders are among the most common conditions in school-aged children. Whereas a speech, language pathologist represents a community of professionals who dedicate their careers to helping children in need and provide support within Loda Unified School District by providing articulation, voice, fluency, and language therapy for students aged three to twenty-two. Whereas speech, language pathologists are highly trained professionals who follow strict ethics policies and maintain certification by demonstrating active and ongoing professional development. And whereas speech, language pathologists work to prevent, assess, and treat speech, language, and social communication. And filling this critical role, speech, language pathologists help students develop practical speaking and listening skills. By the tools that are fundamental to success in personal, gender, professional relationships. And whereas speech, language pathologists are crucial to the different special education team and support resources for classroom teachers, school, support staff, and kids. And whereas speech, language pathologists across our state have lasting impact on future generations by providing exemplary speech, language services to schools and catering to the individual needs of students across all languages, all levels of education. Now therefore, Loda Unified School Board of Education hereby recognizes and wishes to honor the contribution of speech, language pathologists to quality education in state and California. And in the Loda Unified School District, it claims May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, as Speech, Language Pathologist Day. Claimed this day, this fourth day of May, twenty-second. And I can tell you that they do a great job. I have one of my, one of my kids. Rolling bars or whatever. But speech pathologist helped. She was an elementary student and no more. They do, they do a great job, and they're kind of, kind of heroes for a lot of people.
And that's a great story. Thank you, Mr. Kandax. And thank you, speech and language pathologists. Have a great day. Thank you. Like we said, and there is more, so we please enjoy it. Like we said, and there is more. So Arianna, please enjoy your. This is Arianna's last video with the board. One of the great things about being a board member is that we do have student reps. And finally got a meeting that we got to meet you in person. Uh, but, uh, the student reps, uh, I've only heard reports from every board. Uh, we've learned so much outside our campuses that, uh, I think you remind us a lot of ourselves when we were going to school. And, uh, I, I know I didn't accomplish nearly what you're accomplishing. Great things, but, uh, uh, seeing the whole, and, uh, the immediate future in front of you, uh, we were all there one time and we all had the hope of different paths. Uh, but, uh, we are very excited for you. We can't thank you enough uh, for being our student rep for this very, very challenging year. Again, I just can't believe that we're actually here. So we have this recognition for you to, Arianna, call that for service to the Lodi Unified School District Board of Education as the Toke High School representative. And signed by, uh, something guy. All right, signed by me, President of the School Board on May fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I, you know, I am, we all, we can't pick favorites in our school. Obviously, but hopefully our slaves are okay. Uh, if you, you know, still need a big party, you call these, they have, you know, wishing races. Uh, and the board, I'd sure like to join it. Uh, wait, there's more, uh, questions, comments. So, Mr. Healy?
Thank you. You know, the, the student representatives, a lot of times you may feel, well, is anybody really listening? Should I go? I have to tell you, it really keeps the board and probably all the other adults in the room grounded as to why and what we're doing. Uh, and it's really quite enjoyable hearing about the activities that are going on in our schools. So thank you for your, uh, time and energy and, uh, your explanations as to what's going on. Thank you. Just very, this reminder of, like, who the names are.
Oh, well, like, we'll, we'll keep down the download in a second. So, all right. Mr. Corner?
Yes, I think anytime that, uh, people step forward and probably take a swing and try something new. It's, it's awesome. It means you're going to learn something. Maybe like a little critical of you, but you're not afraid of that. You're coming forward and getting into a realm of adults, which can be intimidating, but if you handle it, it's great. Great. Form and prestige and all that, which is amazing. Your age, you're, I think of myself, your age, there is no way. Strength, the values that you have, you're going to carry that through life. Incredible journey and we should know.
Thank you.
Thank you, sport. Mr. Corley?
Thank you.
Vice President Corley.
First of all, thank you for, um, enjoying this position during the COVID year. Um, this is one thing that every other student representative before you has never had to do. So you don't have anything like me, but you had to act during COVID year. So thank you. Um, you were, you were wonderful to listen to. You had a lot of class employees and you should be very proud of yourself because not many young people can sit in a room full of adults and hold their attention, let alone speak to their level. So I appreciate your, um, your candor and your directness during our meetings. Thank you.
Other comments from the board?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, what's next?
After that?
Oh, not, not one longer than that.
Hopefully I'll be back. Okay, possibly. Uh, so that's my plan for now. So are you telling me she went to Mr. Sam's position? Is that what you're telling me?
In the office, there's more.
You need to be sitting.
Well, I, I, I think those are great admissions. Uh, anything we can ever do, and that will seem to happen, let's know. Uh, yeah, and I think you have fantastic role models in everyone, in all the people that you're choosing. And I think that is a big series. Uh, find them in or grab them on so that they're full hands and we'd be thrilled to do all that. And, uh, also, uh, once in a while, if we ever just happen to call this wireless, uh, once you're gone.
Hello.
We'd be so, we'd be so excited. And then Mr. Healy wanted you to know that the certificate isn't the only thing that you get tonight. You also get to take your name later. So hopefully it will be in the dorm room of the institution or higher law department. You can look at it and think of us. Uh, thank you very much for this year. And also, we have Jack Siri, I'm going to you. Lopez, uh, she's representing, uh, Lodi High, Jack Siri?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, uh, clear. Hi, we want to do, um, be sure to thank you for, uh, being in and being our president here. Are you there?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, uh, and, and we, and we know that it has been a very difficult year. Uh, we greatly appreciate you and all the student reps for the great job that you did this year.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Very good. And I believe we have a certificate that, uh, we will be sure to get out to you. And, uh, we are looking forward to both yours and Arianna's reports, uh, later in the evening, which I think is right now. Jack Siri, we can have you on live. I think that Lodi High.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Jack Siri, we can hear you. I don't know if you can hear us.
Okay, yeah. So can I start my report now?
That would be great.
Okay, so. Okay, so hello, everyone. I am the senior class president of Lodi High School. Um, start off, our student government team reports an extremely positive return to school with all of the guidelines and expectations that have been set forth by administration. It's a change for everyone, but overall students are happy to be back in the same space with other students and their teachers. We are excited for whenever the opportunity arrives for our school to resume lunchtime activities, rallies, and social gatherings. We are looking forward to moving on from this pandemic and giving our students all of the celebrations and activities the high school generally provides. We have recently been given directions from Mr. Auerbach, our site principal, to be able to put on lunchtime activities. So far, they adhere the following guidelines. Number one, students are three feet apart. Two, students are six feet from adults. Students are wearing masks. And then four, we are limiting the sharing of materials and/or sanitizing or washing hands before sharing materials. For example, we could play ping pong if students sanitize their hands before using a paddle. Our student government has been active in honoring senior athlete students who have endured, endured a difficult and altered ending to their high school athletic career. Delivering posters and goodie bags to the students personally while also working with our athletic department to recognize the senior athletes in some version of a senior night for them. Student government has just wrapped up election declaration season and will soon begin the campaign season as we elect our new class officers for the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two school year. Since this is our final board meeting for our Lodi High Board of Representatives, we would like to take some time to acknowledge our Lodi High ASV program this past year. While we weren't able to plan and execute many of the normal climate and culture activities in a normal school year, we still worked together to try and maintain and encourage the best environment possible for our Lodi High Flame family. Thank you to the senior cabinet of twenty twenty-one and the ASV cabinet of twenty twenty-one for your diligent efforts and leadership during a global pandemic when answers and avenues were few and far between for our team. Thank you for your work and dedication to serving Lodi High. Now for performances, presentations, and events. Uh, we want to acknowledge the many dedicated staff members of our Lodi High Flame family who are beginning the process of looking ahead and planning events for the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two school year. It takes dedication to look past our current environment and plan ahead of events. Special student staff accomplishments and recognitions. First, we want to acknowledge and thank our Lodi High custodial team for their diligence and hard work to ensure safe, safe and secure return to campus over the last couple of weeks since schools opened. We are relying heavily on their service to make sure we can continue to operate under the current conditions and that our schools can stay open. Second of all, our Lodi High Interact Club is wrapping up their annual canned food drive, though they had to occur much later than usual. It's still epic to see the dedication of their goal of service above self. In academic, first, we have Lodi FFA, who has been active through the entire year with students competing in virtual contests this winter and spring. Through members participated, participation in the motherload section in the UC Davis Job Interview Contest. We also had some students compete in the UC Davis and Chulilla Lake Livestock Judi, judging contest. Four members of Ag welding team have competed in the Merced College and Fresno State Welding Contest. The welding team has qualified and is preparing for the state finals competition. Lodi FFA has also, also had sixteen members receive their state FFA degree. For co-curricular, first, our season two sports rap is wrapping up and our season three sports going strong. We want to acknowledge all athletes and their dedication to keep playing their sport during the challenging season. And second of all, a special thanks to Athletic Director Robert Winterhalter and Athletic Secretary Stacy Loyah Barnhart for their work throughout the year, making sure athletic seasons are possible to our Flame family. Lastly, upcoming activities and events. Our senior class is looking forward to having an in-person graduation ceremony at Toki Stadium on June ninth. We happily encourage the community to continue working diligently to make our colonies way into the orange tier so more of our families and the general pub, public can attend this very much anticipated event. And that's my report.
Very, very nice, Jack Siri. Thank you very, very much for that.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you at the graduation also in person. Thank you. Uh, Arianna? How was your report? How was okay?
Uh, thank you, President Freitas, Dr. Washer, members of the board. I want to start off with my Lodi University. It is insane the amount of thousands of students have up to this year. And they have done amazing. Not any person handed them money, still handle it all to them. So I want to say thank, thank you to them, especially my students who are doing this evening. Um, to start off, sports are doing amazing right now. Our volleyball team did a good on our high last week, which felt great for them. Uh, they always get super excited and there's always great competition. Uh, our baseball team also beat St. Mary's, which was a huge surprise and shocker for us, but it was, it was great. We had a great sport to be part of. And we all are also acknowledging our afternoon speech each week as well and our writing announcements. Uh, student government, we've been making this trash cans on campus. We have a few different ones with a Ninja Turtle one, a SpongeBob, and a trash one that we put around. So we have these trash cans. It's just helping kind of bring the campus, um, all together. We hosted our first spirit day for football and bowling, like, um, when we played Lodi High football game, which was great with the first spirit day. So not everyone participated, but freshmen are still kind of adjusting. So we're excited to keep doing that. We now have committees, um, student government, that we are planning different events. We have kind of made events happen a lot past two this year. We only have a few weeks left, so we want to try to get as many fun activities as we can. The paid program is doing so great. They got to host our first contest stadium, which is super well. They always make sure to include all of the students. We're also making Mother's Day ornaments in our floral class this week, which we just started today. And that is one of my favorite classes. I've learned so much in that class and our teachers are amazing. And they're also going to be making the facade for the year's score for graduation as well, which they do every year. And we hosted state testing last week, Monday through Wednesday for juniors and Thursday for seniors, which is did just be considering we just came back to in person, but we adjusted really well and everyone was able to get their state test out of the way. Our weekly class also decorated lots and placed them around campus for students to find, uh, during the school week and they can bring them in and get prizes or they have motivational points and different. Um, each year, a senior class dedicate something on campus and you get a flag dedicated, dedicated to you. And this year, Sammy Foley has came to me with this amazing idea to kind of upgrade the flowerbed in front of our library. And we're going to be planting a Daphne's maple tree and, um, different daffodils to put right there to dedicate to our senior class. And it would be cool for all of us to be able to come out and put that. And lastly, I want to thank you guys for having me this year. This has been an amazing experiment. And I cannot even explain how much I have learned and all the qualities that this has given me. And it's helped a lot on collab applications and everything. So I want to thank you guys for everything you guys have done for our, our school district, for our school.
Thank you. Well, uh, as we say, you know, we just have a decent draft. Uh, you two are definitely our favorites and, uh, this is very much appreciated. And like, we cannot look, we cannot say that we have an in-person graduation. We, we are very pleased for this. Very nice. Thank you very much for those reports. We know that you have things to get going too. So if you can say, we appreciate that. We also understand. Moving on with our agenda, we gather comments from the public. It's a twenty minutes time period. Has been set aside for the public to address, address the board. I might have to stop this in a few minutes. Each speaker shall limit his or her comments to three minutes. Uh, due to restrictions imposed by the county court, Brown Act regarding discussing topics about a vision of forest diversity, dialogue, how eating fish. This is Armstrong. Do you have anybody who wants to talk to the board tonight or public comment?
Yes, we have five. First up is Tom Rorick.
Very good. Hi, Tom. Welcome to our meeting.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
All right. Thank you. Um, ladies and gentlemen of the board, President Freitas, Superintendent Washer. My name's Tom Rorick and I'm the head custodian at Live Oak Elementary and a custodial negotiator. I just wanted to talk about the high demands and increased workload that COVID- nineteen has brought on custodians. Right now, we are being required to use Clorox three sixty spraying daily. The amount of sanitation required has taken away from our other duties. We are being provided overtime, which I'm thankful for, but we're getting tired. We've had custodians even quit because of the high demands of the job. Everyone is overworked and feeling the pressure. In my opinion, we need more custodians in our district, a lot more. Many of the cuts that happened in two thousand eight were never brought back. One problem we have right now is the lack of people applying to work in our district because the pay is too low. I'm asking that you would consider squaring the salary schedule at fifteen dollars an hour so that everyone can move up at the same percentage as the minimum wage increase. We need to stay competitive to attract more people to work in our district. Until there is a substantial pay increase across the board, I feel that things will continue to decline. I'm asking that you please consider us and our commitment to Lodi Unified and the students we serve. Thank you for your time.
So, this is Armstrong. Who's next?
Next, we have Maria Mac.
Hi, Maria.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, good evening, President Freitas, members of the board, Dr. Washer. Um, I'm coming to you, uh, to first of all, say that I agree with, um, bringing students back to, to the campus. And one of the reason is because of the learning that was lost for most of our students. With that being said, I'm, you know, concerned that summer school is currently only being offered at the high school and elementary level, while our middle school students, they need, um, you know, learning recovery as well. So I hope that, you know, the board takes that into consideration. You know, learning recovery as well. So I hope that, you know, the board takes that into consideration. To offer summer school for our middle school students as well. The other um issue that I want to bring before the board. While we, you know, did bring our students back. It was not, you know, without challenges. And I say that because um, just like the gentleman spoke before me, you know, our custodians are overworked. Our secretaries are overwer- worked, our counselors, psychologists. Of course, our teachers, and I commend them all for the job that they are doing at my site. However, I'm, you know, concerned because of all the issues um that the students did bring with them. Um, and I'm not sure if other sites are having the same issues. But, you know, I am concerned about that and because of that. I know at the middle school level, I believe that a second VP full-time VP is necessary. Um, there are days, because the second VP at my site is only there two and a half days. On the days that that um the vice principal is not there. I don't even get a chance to drink water, or I don't even get a chance to um take a restroom break. So ta- taking that into consideration, we definitely need that second full-time VP. So I thank you for your time and enjoy your evening.
Armstrong, who's next?
Next we have Kimberly Greger.
Hi, Kimberly.
Good evening, President Freitas, members of the board and Superintendent Washer. I've learned not to dial into this meeting, but I'm happy I can still speak here during public comments. As you mentioned, it's teacher appreciation week and what the teachers would like you to show the appreciation is to give us cola. No tell days and a fair contract. The profit nations and the Facebook posts don't make us feel very appreciated and they feel like they're empty words without action. You have nine million to recruit and retain teachers. Use it to retain the wonderful teachers that you have continued to compliment meeting after meeting. Please show our students that the hard work does pay off and we have worked harder than ever since last March. Please advise the bargaining committee to settle our two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty contract to truly show us appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Who's next, Mrs. Armstrong?
Next we have Janine. The Bel- the Belgium? I'm sorry.
Janine? Hi, Janine. President Freitas, Janine's mic is uh, help you. Janine, in the upper right-hand corner, there's a little button.
Can you hear me? Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me? Okay, good. Good evening, President Freitas, Superintendent Washer, members of the board. My name is Janine Basaldua. I'm a, I'm a CSEA member, chapter seventy seven, and a newly elected negotiator for transportation. I've worked for the district for over twenty years and I love my job. I'd like to speak for a moment on bus drivers, bus attendants, dispatchers, mechanics. And our supervisors. All of us as a unit are very important to have. An adequate number of staff to run the transportation department smoothly and effectively. During these pandemic times, the stress level has become very high in our department. Due to lack of drivers, bus attendants, and mechanics. Drivers have been forced to do la- last-minute doubling and changing of routes, changing bus attendance due to. Due to a shortage um and call-ins in the sick line, dealing with angry parents. Or late bus arrivals, which is understandable. Confusion for children on what bus to take at school to home. Drivers not familiar with other students when doubling routes and changing routes. Special needs students upset not having their same driver and their same bus attendant. Do you care? Students are upset over these changes. Does it matter? It is impossible to make all students, especially the special needs students, wear masks during bus ride. Even with one bus attendant, the ratio could be one bus attendant per a whole bus load. Members of the board, we're losing valued transportation staff. Bus attendants are leaving. They can't make it on the six hours plus the benefits. There i- it's just too high. Drivers already lost their twenty days with the modified T. What else will be taken? We've lost so many due to the cost of living and the and the benefits are so high. They cannot afford it. Are we of value to you? Please show us. Give transportation an incentive to stay. Thank you, members of the board, for listening to me and for your time.
Mrs. Armstrong, you have some items?
Just a few more. Uh, Professor Sue Fowler.
Hi, Sue. You have a public comment for us, Sue? Okay, if we find Sue a little bit later, we'll uh, be sure to come back.
Next, uh, next I have Pam Payne.
Hi, Pam. Do you have a public comment for the board?
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, thank you for taking my letter. Um, so dear members of the board and and. Everyone th- listening, thank you. I realize this last year has brought a lot of unforeseen challenges. That you have faced in the school district. Despite the challenges, I have watched Lodi Unified rise up and accept those challenges head-on. While it's not a perfect scenario, Lodi Unified has proven their commitment to ensuring that our children. Get the best education possible during these times and be safe. My name is Pam Payne and I work for Cultural Home State International, CHI, nonprofit foreign exchange student program. The same one that Torina Taylor has hosted with all those years and I'm so, uh, congratulations, Torina. Um, I've worked with Lodi Unified as a CHI representative for twenty-three years. Connecting cultures across the world and being your local advocate for public diplomacy by reaching a whole new generation. Lodi Unified has been extremely supportive of our program over the years. With several school employees and hundreds of families in our area hosting for us. Our program allows students to come here and make a positive impact on the local community. By volunteering, sharing their culture, and leaving with amazing memories as well as becoming a part of an American family. After already matching twenty students with host families last year, twenty twenty-one. CHI was told that Lodi Unified was not going to participate in the exchange student program, which was understandable due to the pandemic. While this was devastating to us and the students planning to come, we understood the decision. Being based on so many unknown factors, of these students too, though, were able to get inter-district transfers to Galt. Which was um, which host families were willing to transport them so they could still come. Both have adapted well and now are going to the school and campus and they're just extremely excited. They're um, so the other ones that were placed though, we had to cancel because they aged out. Or they decided to postpone to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, hoping things would be better like they are. The latter is the case of six students. The six that postponed, um, they were ki- are coming to the Lodi area hoping. Unfortunately, though, they're turned, yeah, they um. Let's see, if they were turned away, if they're turned away this year, though, they will age out. And they will not, many students are unable to postpone their program because of their age. And these postponed students are extremely grateful for the opportunity to have host families who remain. So committed to them after over a year of waiting to meet them in person. They're still communicating with them, hoping that they can come. I work with about fifteen different school districts in California Central Valley. And Lodi Unified is one of two districts that has said no this upcoming twenty-one, twenty-two year. CHI is committed to providing our schools, students, and host families. All the support that they need to ensure a successful and safe program. We will continue to follow the CDC, state, and local health uh agency guidelines. A few steps that are being taken is students will arrive earlier than the normal time. They'll arrive within two weeks. This time so they can quarantine at least ten.
We need you to wrap up, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Anyway, what I'm pleading with you now, I know that these are unforeseen things that are happening. What I'm pleading with you is that we could just have the six spots that are, that deferred from last year. So, and my contact information's on there. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Pam. And we have one more public comment and that's uh, uh, Jacob? Jacob, uh, is it Morse or verse?
It's uh Morse.
Okay, Jacob. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you.
You have a public comment, Morse?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, so my name is Jacob Morse. I'm a senior at Lodi High and I recently read the new rules for the graduation. For Tokyo Lodi High. And I have some questions that concern, as I first like to mention, the social distancing and the odds stated in the new rules. It says that we have to stay six feet apart outside. Even though the CDC said on March nineteenth that we only need to be three feet apart. As far as I know, there has only been one individual who assessed the positive for COVID and it seems to have been a false positive. Please keep in mind that in school, we are only three feet apart from our classmates and we do not have to be in class. That being said, there are more individuals on my high school campus at any given time than there will be at regulation. So what makes you think that we are in need of these pods and they need to be six feet apart from each other? I can tell you that from this speculation, we are in no need of these pods and spacing of six feet. And I've also read that if you want a single parent to go, you have to test negative for COVID. And due to this idea, what is the need for these positive extra spacing? Now, I understand that if you get vaccinated or test regularly two weeks prior to this graduation, you can bring more guests than one. But not everyone wants this vaccine because it is a very new medicine and it seems like they are forcing upon the issue of. Getting this vaccine when it isn't allowed to do so. Also, these students and parents may not have access to regular testing because of work or school. And they not want to test regularly for this graduation. So how is this fair to all students and parents that want to participate in this event? In the state of California, how is Disneyland able to be open and have people and their families go? And we aren't allowed to have our families go to our graduation? Not only do they get to have their families at Disneyland, but they can eat and be inside with no class. And there are way more people in Disneyland than there would be at our graduation. Another concern of mine is the differences in tiers for COVID and the rules for that. Under the new precedent of the San Diego case that allows us to go back to school. The judge in that case decided that the tier system doesn't matter based on whether students can go back to school or not. And assuming that this graduation is a school event, there should be no difference in how many people you can bring based on the tiers of the county. Also, Governor Newsom is going to take away the tier system on June fifteenth. That is six days after our graduation. So what's the difference between June ninth and June fifteenth? I also wanted to mention that this is a high school graduation and not just an eighth grade or sixth grade graduation. This is a big moment not only for students, but also parents, siblings, and grandparents as well. These students, including myself, have worked their butts off during this year because of COVID. Many students have had mental health problems by not having a normal event full of senior year. And having a modified graduation is not ideal or fair to the senior class. That being said, with everything from us and the students, we should at least have the best graduation to make it up for all of it. Uh, we have gotten slammed and raked over the coals because of this virus and every student persevered to graduate this year. I and hopefully the whole student body do not want to see us getting slammed again. Because of ignorant rules and regulations made by the government made of ignorant people. We are free people by the constitution and should have the ability to see our posterity. And classmates graduate this very difficult and long school year. So I please ask you to do everything in your power to change these rules for the better by meeting or letting families go. To see their children's and classmates once in a lifetime graduation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. All right, we thank all of our students for tonight's public comment and moving on with your agenda. We now have consent agenda eight, repeat this to the board. Wish full of the items, consent agenda eight, right? Yes, Mr. Neely? Any other members of the board wish to have any items pulled? And is anybody from the public wish to have any items consent agenda eight? Mrs. Oregon? Thank you. This board? Uh, can I have more to add to the remaining?
Mr. President, I move we approve the rest of the repeat agenda eight.
Thank you, Mr. Birthday Boyfriend. You, it's it's your birthday till midnight, so we need to celebrate it, so. Very, thank you, Mr. Neely, for a second. I, we, uh, do not take a vote also. Uh, we have the student, uh, student vote, uh, Arielle. Thank you, Arielle, for your vote, and we will go ahead and call for the vote. Maybe? All right, it's nice to move ahead with the B to a electronic vote. Why are we going ahead and going to like, uh, manual votes, Mr. Neely?
Hi.
Mr. Navat?
Hi.
Mr. Eric Lee?
Hi.
Mr. Alex, hi.
Who goes for his board, hi. Uh, my friend McFarlane, I believe I. Al- almost like, yeah. Uh, Mrs. Oregon? Uh, hi to Neely.
Evening, President Freitas, members of the board. We're um questioning the contract list. Uh, number three for uh Jerry Evans and Schultz Management. And this has come up to the board several times in previous years. This year's first, I know we've not been conducting any drills and practice. This, I understand, would take like contractors for the next three years. Uh, is there a way that we're evaluating um these services? And is there a way that we could have internal staff be doing these services and drills? Do we really need to spend this money on outside source? So I would just ask that we evaluate this conduct going forward and the three years that we couldn't be done in term.
Thank you, Mrs. Oregon. As to hi to Neely, what are the wishes of the board?
Sure, and I move we approve hi to Neely for repeat agenda.
Navat? Your motion, thank you, Mr. Actit. For second, uh, student vote? And call for the vote. Uh, hi to pay two contracts. And that counts as seven zero. I can say it's approval of construction project, chimney folder, order of visiting, nearly even school.
Thank you, Mr. Strass. Uh, Mr. Khan, can you tell us a little more detail about this change order? Eight percent of the national out there, pretty significant change. Can you tell us what went into that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Neely, uh.
Other than just what's written down, I'm not, I can read what it says about the approach for a man.
President Neely members, or President Freitas, members of the board, Dr. Washer. Uh, Mr. Neely, this is a change order that's brought on by a change of uh water connection to the site. As um required by the city of Lodi. Board may know that water used to come in on the northwest side and the south side of the Tulkay. The south side of the mountain shut off, we had to pull out the Pleasant at the two locations, one for domestic water and one for irrigation. Um, this is listed as a change order under measure U um, because it, we're, we're gonna include it as a change order under measure U and let the measure U contract of duty and company do the work. This looks to us like it is, it, it's, uh, ideal candidate type of work and the rationale board is, or the board's was to retain restrictive maintenance fund and expect probably to hear this cost against general.
All right, what was the basis we had to go from a different direction of the water?
The city's changing where they want us to take the water.
So because the city wants to do it at its fastest?
Well, I, I would also say that the, um, water bikes on, on this plant are still kind of. So I mean, there's, there's, it, it's not a bad reason or bad time to use a team restricted maintenance to replace it with more modern. And then you also get your, your asphalt.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Uh, I would need, uh, Mr. Prius, I will do the first. Thank you, Mr. Neely, for your presentation. This is, uh, second, uh, other comments anymore? Uh, Arshel?
That's a compliment, she kind of, it's, it's a well over there. Uh, just a question, um.
Yeah.
On the change order, there was a testing station that was outside where I believe you're talking about putting the new water into Needham. And there, because it was the end of the plume from the dry cleaning, would we be getting, um, test results and changing up to that new location because water before was on the other side, so they said we didn't have to worry about the water through um, the other side, which was the end of the plume from the dry cleaners from several years ago. I don't know if Mr. Paul is familiar with that or if that has been looked at. That testing station gave reports as to how that water will be fed into Needham now, which would be leave right where the testing well for the city was drilled, because I understand they're still testing.
The water that will be coming into these new connections will be, uh, city of Lodi water.
Right, the, the, there was contamination several years ago. We would much appreciate if that was looked into. Um, as we were told, having worked that we didn't need to worry because the water is coming in on the other side of the school. And now they're saying it's going to be directed to the side where they had, um, toxic levels and we're doing regular testing. So we just, we'd love to make sure it's still safe.
I'll, I'll, I'll let you through, but it is city of Lodi water, these waters. Okay, Mr. Sherin?
When, when they were testing for the plumes, uh, being of my profession, we had no real, uh, how the water flows throughout the city. Uh, it doesn't come from a well to a school, correct? It goes from a well to the system. The system has, um, I don't know if you ever have ever seen these really large tanks. It's, it's infiltration only when it's in that area that needs it. And it depends on how it's fed, basically. The, and I'll just leave it, the city gets on an absolute schedule everywhere in the city. So that information is available, um, they call all the state guidelines which are getting stricter, I should say more strict, all the time. So, um, yes, they are tested through the city of Lodi, that information probably just helps.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Eric. Uh, no further comments, then we'll go ahead and call for the vote. Do you like? Um, four hours, is it four hours? I should look. At the most, period seven. All right, um, we've been going for about three hours now. Why don't we go ahead and take our five minutes, any break? So we have, um, five hundred.
You like that sentence? I think fifteen, fifteen seconds. Okay.
Mr. Carter, you wrote this for us.
Were these, um, mine, sorry? Lights are on again.
President, it looks like the owl went to sleep on us, but waking up right now, so I'm gonna give it about fifty more seconds. Looks like it cuts it out.
You say whatever you want. Or whatever you do.
That is your answer.
We get a little. Okay, we're doing. Oh, wait.
Okay.
So, which you got, you lifted from the top? Thank you, President. This comes from Dr. Washer. So, um, this is an item the board has seen before. It's the purchase of Westlake property or the board's site in West Stockton. It's a nineteen point six eight acre piece of property. The board has previously authorized negotiations at two million seven forty one one sixty. That's just a tad less than a hundred and forty thousand an acre. Uh, for a point of reference, uh, at least in terms of a commercial property, the board made, we called it, it purchased, um, and as contractors, that would remind me almost quickly, the last available commercial spot in Lodi, uh, city of Lodi proper, which is now your MNO facility, uh, or paid one hundred and six thousand an acre for that. It's now worth well over two hundred thousand, so of course staff is recommending them. If you want this, be happy to answer any questions. And this, like, uh, because the trade part way, uh, the homes that are there, uh, our schools are already impacted. They are, and we expect more development in that area also. And so that, uh, the, this, uh, plot is in, um, is located within a twenty two hundred house. So it's currently building itself. Amazing. And we plan to use this to put in a elementary school. That will be up to the board, so, um, and in the, probably not for the remainder of this calendar year, but the board can expect early in the next calendar year, there'll be a naming of the site. If the board approves tonight, there'll, the site will need to be named. Um, the staff will present, the architect will do schematic drawings and give the board all kinds of logistical calculations for what the site might, um, present in terms of future building. And this, like, uh, nineteen point six eight, sixty point sixty eight acres, uh, nineteen and a half, almost twenty acres. Uh, we have a wide range of options. We have a lot more options than any other piece of property currently. All right. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Uh, any questions from the board? Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Carter, I want to clarify that this, those from this comes from developer funds, is that correct?
Yes, sir. All developer fees. This is paid for by, under their funds twenty five. It is used under fees. And there's no different funds to go into the purchase of this property. Hey, Mr. Bailey, this is for.
Yeah, instead of, um, you said the house to me, don't know. Where are those four children's schools?
Um, the, the elementars will be Manly O and the medals will probably be Chris.
I know where they are.
And Manly, it sounded like all your elementars are down a little bit.
Oh, sure.
But, but, you know, Manly is still one of your biggest elementary schools, and they've had at times over nine hundred kids there.
And if we could build, I'm like, I know it's a big ask.
No, well, no, I would, I would say we're certainly looking at, uh, somewhere around five years to either deliver or at least start a new school.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Sure. That's it. You're staring me down. You're. I just wanted to, bro, we do have excellent school building, school site. Now, we had those friends growing up for the tech academies, how old were you when calling it?
Green Academy.
Green Academy. Green Academy, yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, uh, there's one question I wrote on that today. It's impressive. So as we get closer to this, why don't we start looking at something, something like that? There's, of course, that's based on modifications, unfortunately. There's lots of awards too at summer, remember? So it was Green Academy, and we could maybe just kind of keep that in mind, and, you know, we'll make it work together.
Very nice. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Senator, if I may add one, we called it, it still also, um, maintains about fifty five million of on the authority in your measure out, plus enough money in your one twenty five year developer piece that pretty much still.
Very nice. Mr. President, just making right now, purchases from regions for future use in five years, like we said. And I, there's no more questions. I know we approved this.
I'll second that. Thank you, uh, Mr. Natto for your motion. Thank you, Mr. Bailey, for the second. Any other comments from the board? Comments from the public? Any comments? Mr. Bailey, we'll go ahead and call the board. And item O A I one, authorizing the purchase of seven zero. O A I two, ratification of the minimum of understanding of the Lodi educational association. Mr. McMillian. President, we recommended to approve this agreement, and we wholeheartedly will. Is that approved? Is that okay? Any comment?
We'd just like to say that we thank both sides for coming to an agreement that, um, shows recognition, recognition for teachers that are working under such difficult circumstances as our student, uh, district, hybrid system, black, black kid, person live, but still working to do the best with students that are distant, distant learning. We appreciate those statements that are outlined in the M O U to show respect for the teachers and the job they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, and we, uh, appreciate and respect you and all members of your position. I have a motion for this order. Another motion, uh, second from Mr. Beverly. Pretty much from the board. Mr. Mr. Bailey.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll continue to name this. We'll say that I've been voted. We're gonna sit in the press. I expect that everyone, all the other units will have an opportunity to get an agreement similar to this. It's important. We don't just pick out one on that. People call this hazard. Well, all right. These are spending the majority of the time in that classroom, so that's why this is in first place. What we also need to do, though, is we've got parat educators in there, we've got material workers, we've got, uh, students, we've got all, we've got everyone. There's a lot of work left to be done on this. We'll expect to be, that we've got substitutes in that class. We're gonna do anything for that. Now, what are we gonna do with this? It, 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 it's a start. We've got a lot of.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Other comments from the board? We have a motion and a second. Uh, any other public comments? Mr. Bailey, we'll go ahead and call for the votes. And the M O U with L E A is ratified, seven zero. Translations, L E A. Personnel matters, Mr. McMillian. Mr. President, thirteen personnel matters are presented for consideration.
So we're gonna prove this a lot.
And I know. Motion by a birthday boy, second from Mr. Bailey. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? There's our, sorry, we have a public comment.
Yes, uh, yeah, maybe Brayden.
All right. Hi, Debbie. Debbie, did you have a comment on personnel matters?
President, it says it looks like Carrie.
Okay. If you find her, please let us know, and, uh, in the meantime, we will go ahead and call for the votes. And personnel matters, passes, seven zero. Reports, Dr. Washer. We have a report on, uh, the, uh, in-person instruction and summer school.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, yeah, I'm gonna start off the report this evening, and we'll have others chime in here. Just give you a, um, brief overview of our county's tier status at this point. Well, actually, on the report, this was as of last week, um, because the next, that, oh, there you go. Uh, those are the numbers from last week. Uh, we did go up a little bit, and today the case rate is eight point four. Adjusted case rate, eight point two. Positivity rate, three point one. Health equity measure is three point oh. So three of those did, did, just fill in the ring. As you know, it takes two weeks to get to the next level, um, so we would need another two weeks meeting for it in order to. Go to the next slide. We're gonna have some reports from our different divisions and let you know what's going on out there in the in-person instruction world, and we'll start with Mr. Scott McGregor from Elementary Education.
Thank you, Dr. Washer. This is from the board and, uh, Dr. Washer. It continues to be, uh, there's, continues to be a lot of excitement at the elementary schools. Dr. Washer mentioned our, our P L C visit to see re-school last week, and it really was a lot of fun to see the children back in their classes. And anytime you ask them if they're happy to be back or I, for, you know, they're very excited to explain, yes, we are. It was also great to see the teachers interacting with the kids. I think it's, it's neat. This, this Dr. Washer mentioned, uh, Miss Nicole, uh, did, um, this Florida, uh, Hood. She, she was doing a great job of connecting the two, um, the in-person learners and the distance learners with, uh, with technology. So they had a little breakout room going, and it's just, it's really neat to see the, the work that the teachers are doing to engage the students who are up on the map. Some comments continuing to check in with the principals of business schools. Um, they say the, the staff is just excited about, um, they're equipped to seeing the children every day. Um, they've, they've expressed that explaining and teaching in person is just so much more beneficial for the students. So they're so happy to be back. Uh, so many teachers to be working with the kids in person. The steps, the early reading intervention work, um, has also been much more effective in person. Uh, giving kudos to the business services department, the animal supplies at P E, P D have been great. Um, you know, they've, they've been running short communication with our house, and those things are made available right by itself. Pretty much appreciated. And then hand washing stations also have been something that the students have been using quite a bit. And, um, principals, teachers, and students are very appreciative of that work, for that, that particular service. Um, the parents have been great, uh, really excited. Uh, I've been at a couple of schools at the close of the school day recently, and, um, just the smiles on their face and getting back to the routines is still a lot of, a lot of fun to see. Uh, the extra time for custodians, um, been appreciated by the staff, uh, to keep everything clean. And really the, um, the, the work the students are doing, staying aware of and following the different protocols to stay safe. They really haven't, um, faced a lot of complaints, but the kids are doing what they need to do to be successful in class and, uh, all those safety measures. That's, that's been a lot of fun. But we are, are involved in testing, and I think Mr. Samson spoke to that a little bit earlier, and, uh, it's a very busy and very stressful life for the teachers and the, uh, the site administrators. But they're raising that, doing a great job. There's been a few technology glitches, uh, and you've worked with the, the technology department, but that's been, um, explained as, uh, an issue with the company that's hosting, um, that, that work. So that's been, uh, a disappointment, but it's been fun, like I've seen all year long. The site administrators working with the teachers to try to figure out how do we overcome this, how do we make it work? And that's, that's what we stand for. That's kind of been the motto that we've been pushing forward with the elementary division, and, and all staff members continue to step up and make the best possible experience for the children and the parents and teachers as possible. So that's, uh, kind of worth saying. Um, a lot of, a lot of people plan to see children back, teachers happy to, um, be able to teach in person and, and see the benefits of their work with, uh, the students and their, their success. So, um, thank you very much, Your Honor. So, whoa, we are. Good questions for Paul. Yes, sir. Uh, why don't you talk to him a little bit about, uh, you've got some testing coming up here in a week or so, right? Those are at different stages, uh, different. What kind of testing is this? Is it, is it rate and modify, uh, this back?
It is modified. It is shorter than, than what we've seen. Yes, they, they give order.
All right. Uh, do you know what's gonna happen with these results? Are they just gonna be compiled into it? It's gonna be one of those things with an asterisk, right?
With the what?
With an asterisk because it's shorter and it doesn't carry the weight as the others and. What do you have for this, for the state? And, and the other question, do we have?
Yes.
We do have testing, um. Well, I mean, potentially an asterisk because this is the first year of this. It is possible that the state will continue this, uh, test in, in that half of the time that it takes primarily for the multiple choice. The performance tasks haven't been shortened at all, but overall, the test takes roughly a third of the, of the, uh, time zone. Uh, it's unknown about your asterisk question, but it is required test. Uh, what will be done with it? It will be reported up for our student to each family as has been asked. And so it, it, it will give a summation of their, their status, their grade level. Uh, it won't be, you know, as quite robust as previous, but will still give a somewhat of an interesting reading on their targets on rate of standards.
All right. And then, are we looking at some type of, you know, schools, a four school, right, right before, two weeks or something like that? For, or especially for our title one schools. I mean, that's, this has been rough on these kids this year. I know you. What can we do to try to eliminate some of that? We talked about maybe having, bringing some kids back for some math pressure or language art pressure or something. Are we looking at anything like that? Early with, and early with.
Mr. Bailey, members of the board, we will, um, talk a little bit about the summer school, um, a little bit later in the report, so we can certainly address that then. At this point, we don't have a, we don't have any dates in place for students or teachers to come back or move that picture, you know? And some schools have done that already before even the fourth school that they've done a little bit of that, especially with kindergarten kids.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's one of the things. If you wanted to take a couple, a couple moments.
That's, that's one of the things, if you wanted to take a couple, a couple moments. The, the transition for the kindergarten students this, this year, or the transition, the recovery in person instruction. Um, having that even in the video connection, the virtual connection with their teachers, it appeared to be a lot less stressful. According to my, the site administrators and teachers, which was really refreshing. And, um, some of the principals I've checked with, um, it's stated in conversations with their teachers that, um, the students that were really making a network to, to log in and be attentive every day with their teachers are not as far behind as, um, as it would have seemed. I mean, it's a lot across the board, but there's a number of folks that have expressed that and are quite pleased with, you know, the work that the students did put in.
Really, I want to see where mine is and I can almost bet you I know where this is. That's something that we need. Thank you very much, Scott. Any other questions?
Why don't we go over and finish the presentation and then we come to comments just so that we don't get riled and we don't double up on certain topics. And Scott's not going anywhere.
All right, thank you. Derek?
Thank you, President Freitas, members of the board, Dr. Washer. Um, in the secondary division, we have a few, a few, a few very exciting things to report. We have forty-nine graduates committed. And that is a very high number this time of year. Principals and staff and independents have almost doubled their enrollment. And have done truly incredible jobs of working with students, you know, it's like any other site, this time presented meeting challenges. And they have really stepped up. So that forty-nine graduates at this point, that is a very exciting, we'll celebrate it with Fred with the, the morning that they completed and remember next, that was great. Um, uh, principals really have some major shout-outs. You go to, uh, business services, MNO, and the warehouse. What are the pickings, picket tables, PPE, other requests? They said when I asked them for information to this update, that, uh, that there's that on YouTube. Those departments are really serving our site. Many sites here recount how things appeared the same day or the next day upon the next request. I made a joke with, uh, that you should call this LUSD Prime. Opportunity, I often, a lot of, a round facility out there when it calls a meeting and I, I'm by the warehouse by the bit. I'm speaking to Patrick, works in the warehouse and, and, uh, he was sharing how they're working so hard and, you know. Hopefully sites understand we're not Amazon, what you said. It's not, it's like there's anything, they're saying they're incredible. Hopefully they would be recognizing that in my update because sites truly are grateful for the multiple services here to see.
If I may say, we're not Amazon, we don't have any bottom next.
So maybe LUSD Prime is not an habit of it, but, um, I think they want to secondary division have a lot of need, uh, needs and demands for its departments. So we can assist the site or service to bring service to kids. We recognize several students in group tonight. There are others. People throughout all of our schools trying to keep opportunities for like our kids. My middle school had a team finish third in the county's H2O hackathon. Those students won five hundred dollars in cash and gift card. Uh, we received reports that we has in science olympia, students finished third in the state in water quality. We'll get that in into more formal recognition. But again, our sites are, are persevering in these hetero opportunities. That's, uh, that's been a lot towards students. Uh, in general, sites report widespread compliance with COVID-related rules for students. But as students have sites are addressing a large number of behavior issues, as students learn how to err on the other students. The start of any school year has a number of challenges. Maybe putting just put in a classroom, spend much time on it. Any campus can tell you what happens in spring, that spring break. So when you mix these two things together and with a lot of pent-up energy, our sites are seeing, uh, you know, some of that come out in unproductive ways. There's also a lot of excitement and a lot of productive ways. Students present tonight talk about that excitement, about being back. They recognize their teachers and their sites for, um, what that has been like for them and a great, or safe return. Uh, we're very hopeful for that too, but, um, sites are working through that. Um, one of the ways that they're working through that is we are launching the panorama universal SCL diagnostic stack over the next couple of weeks. Two meetings ago, um, we are excited to see that data. For helping students, um, through COVID and beyond. He's so excited about that. And more than anything, site leaders report admiration for their staffs. When I think working with administrators, there's a lot of tired faces. And a lot of tired voices. And that's the same for their staff. They're tired. Appreciate the, uh, the economist or nearly that maybe Scott and I are not too worried or work for, but I, I think maybe we are. Because there's a lot of expectations for ourselves and for our sites and our, and most folks have been stepping up good at all levels. Uh, but you know, I, I sense that, that charges and, and they're grateful to those for their people. They, they report their teachers, announcers, support staffs, flexible, they're flexible, they're dedicated and they're willing to scale up. It was led by teacher Steve Box. He wanted to make sure that students fit in the south. He wanted to make sure that they signed up for that. That pretty some great things, but it is. They walked into the five acres and they're amazed by what they're seeing. You hear them brag about their teachers. Support staff. I think, you know, we are well. Uh, they're also very quick collaboration they have with each other. They're working, they need on each other a lot. It's not easy times. Um, I guess that, you know, we're all better than the wear. Uh, but there's, there's still, um, wanted to report that as well.
Thank you, Derek. Dr. Washer, you finish.
Mr. Khan, business services.
Uh, always do Amazon Prime would be better than.
There you go.
Thank you, President Freitas. Um, my report is both similar to my last report and also limits what Mr. Palmer said. Mr. Palmquist has said that the fighting spirit is still strong. I, I'm amazed at, at the calm of the directors and how well they're guiding their staffs. Uh, and disbelief at how well the staff is performing. This is not without the rights and bounds as Mr. Palmquist indicated. The exhaustion levels are high. Um, I, I'll note that in transportation and some of our buses now we're riding two to a seat. So kids are coming back. Um, and that's, that wasn't easy to schedule nor, nor is it easy to, to perform daily. But in the midst of all this, that staff has also implemented, you know, implemented new system called Zonar, which is attracting the kids at any point in time. Just a single staff member in transportation can tell parents exactly where their kids. And for a principal. So in, in spite of all the, um, the, the COVID issues that, that are classified staff base, bases. Business of the, of the board is still ongoing, it's growing, it's improving. And all of our departments, nasty rattles of energy that's been buying commodity. Because even though commodity prices are going high for, um, future delivery, because of all these bottlenecks or there's surpluses and warehouses all over, she's just been buying. Um, Mr. Shaw, the number, the time cards are going triple. How he gets, uh, his staff motivated and, and, and going to just churn through those documents every day to get people paid is amazing. Um, uh, Director Warren is accounts payable, going without a hitch. And it's not like we're not buying a lot of stuff. We're buying tons of stuff of, uh, Ms. Cutts and Director, um, Andres and Director. I mean, everybody's commented about how budget items are being handled quickly, supplies are running into the site. The staff that is serving students face to face are getting what they need. So, um, I think, I don't know if you hear, um, cry every week after the first week of June, it might sound more like people slumping into sofas, but I know that our, our staff on our side is really looking for the next four weeks to go quick. It's all possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'm going to share a little bit with what we're doing with summer school, elementary and secondary.
Hi, Jose. Hi. President Freitas, members of the board, Dr. Washer, happy to meet today and present our summer school updates. I know many of us have a countdown. We actually have a quite opposite. We're ready to launch our program. And so, um, there's a lot of excitement and I can share with you, there's no shortage of students. Are all interested in wanting to take the summer school or some kind of support system. So we're here to do our very best by that support. So, uh, what we have as of today, uh, initially proposed, we have, uh, six elementary school sites that will be offering summer school program, fifteen instructional days. Uh, when we originally posted these positions, we posted for seventy-two, uh, teachers that we needed to hire to fill, uh, the six different school sites across the district. Today, we posted our elementary positions, uh, twice and we've only been able to recruit thirty-six teachers. And, uh, and so we're about to repost these positions tomorrow at a different pay rate. Uh, now that the MOU has been ratified, I'm hoping that will gain new interest and, uh, create a participation from our teachers to work this summer. Uh, as we'll certainly have the students to, to put in classrooms. Uh, so if it doesn't turn for, for, uh, an increase in teachers, then we will probably have to consolidate our summer school sites to accommodate the, uh, the teachers that we have available to, to teach. Uh, so far, uh, our social program, we have our elementary schedule go from June fourteenth to July second. Uh, it'll be a four-hour school day and we are planning for transportation at designated hubs throughout the district. So we get kids to their, uh, to their schools. So, uh, as today, we have a count of over a thousand kids that have been recommended for summer school. So we'll be sending personal invitations to the students so they can confirm their, uh, their attendance. So that's what we're at with our elementary summer school. Uh, I can go ahead and speak to high school.
Uh, with LDA? Do you have that LDA mantle that, that aside?
The elevator program is the fourth summers for elevator and we're planning in on the thirty classrooms and you can see the grade levels that we're touching there. Probably five hundred students and, uh, we're going to recruit a few more, we still have a few seats. Uh, this program is in the distance learning model as opposed to the other elementary, which would be in the person models. We have both offerings this summer. And, uh, this is ready to go again. We, uh, have teachers already identified. So students were, they're recruiting commercial students. Again, this is the fourth year, it's kind of getting into a, a very, very routine mode and it seems to function well. The last year virtual mode, which everybody got launched into last year, went quite well actually. And, um, we look, we do look forward next year to go back in person, but since we have in person model, uh, we'll be offering this as a virtual option.
We are also looking at some middle school options. You heard, uh, from public comments this evening, there's a concern and interest for middle school. So we are looking at some ideas for middle school, uh, presenting Jeff, Jeff Sutton.
We're here in the county office to offer some of their STEM, uh, centers, makerspace and STEM. Also their dorm ferry. Sorry, some, just one day camp, some of them are eight to two, some of them are four. And we're, uh, looking to connect that also with the gate, uh, some, summer school we're hoping to launch, which would just be a two-week program, but their, their Friday, each week would be going to one of those county offices as well. There's also, uh, it's, hopefully we can launch also, and we're, we're correlating with the A program. STEM focused program for elementary, three to sixth grade. And, um, the coding camp also that you see there is, is connected to the elevator math program. It is also hosted or produced by Silicon Valley Education Foundation. We contract with Elevate Math. They have an online code in camp. We have two teachers already, um, that have, uh, training with that corporation to provide this code in camp. It's a two-week, uh, online, uh, it's very virtual, but it's a two-week program for coding. They get a little circuit board and they, they do some amazing things with it. It's still being new this year to, uh, for us, but it's testing that all I can see from the math program. And also the demand I think is pretty strong. They have a lot of teachers that are asking. And emphasizing that their students will be, we've advertised yet, um, but the, uh, the other, so it is sort of a middle school camp idea and it's not a full-blown summer school, uh, per se. But we're trying to get more of their attention with these programs, uh, you know, particularly the, the draw in elementary, uh, summer school is mom and dad tell you to go. The draw at my school is credit. There's a harder draw for middle school. So we're trying to keep there.
And now we can talk about high school summer school plan.
Our high school, uh, summer school is comprised of twenty-four instructional days. Uh, offering two semesters, uh, each, uh, twelve days. Uh, will be starting in June fourteenth through this and going through July sixteenth. One of the, uh, items that we have this summer is we're really doing our very best to offer, uh, an opportunity for students to use credit recovery. And advanced, I know every year, uh, we are increasing our staffing for, uh, for, for subjects, English, science and math. We're also, uh, offering students opportunities, uh, for Apex. Students who enroll in Apex program will be able to recover up to twenty credits. That is, uh, something that will benefit non-graduating seniors who will, which will have first priority in our Apex programs. Um, the plan for summer school began in January and we've seen the transition of various tiers go through, through, uh, through the months following, uh, planning. And so we originally planned for distance learning and as of today, we're keeping the distance learning model, at least we're in favor of the distance learning model for several factors that were currently, uh, being challenged with. Uh, one of the biggest factors, uh, is the fact that teachers hired for the summer will be required to transition into the summer school program. The following day, uh, in the school year, the state board. So, uh, in the school year's June ten, uh, search orientations are June eleventh, perceived search was June fourteen. So there really is a transition period. Uh, classrooms that, uh, will be offering summer school, uh, the existing teachers will need to move out and some of the teachers will be moved in and back to being in person. So those are the challenges that our teachers have faced, uh, and have expressed to me in regards to why, uh, I had such a low interest and concerns with the fact that we may potentially, uh, consider, you know, the different models of instructional, summer school. Uh, as of today, I have a total of forty-six teachers, uh, that have applied for summer school. Uh, in a distance learning model and, uh, number of students, uh, course requests, we have close to four thousand student request. So I truly believe that, you know, this year's going to be a monumental year for students in need of credit recovery. And I'm hoping that our summer school, uh, will be able to offer the needs of the students in the district. All in all, it's, it's, it's challenging year, but you know, this is our second go ahead. We were at this point last year, uh, and we were planning for a virtual summer school. And it was something that we were able to do with quite success. And the access of, uh, the distance learning, the flexibility of it was really an appeal for our summer teachers to work and students as it's a really great flexibility with their summer plans. And so that is something that, you know, this, this is something that the district can potentially consider in future years and non-COVID years as well. As a way to implement, uh, a summer school that's flexible for students. Uh, and maximize access to students in need of credit recovery or advancement. So those are all the things that we're considering and planning forward in the next couple of weeks and we're ready to get started. That's what we have going on so far. Thank you for the day.
Mr. Freitas, President of the Board, we know that there are lots of questions on different topics here. Summer school being one, also, we know that there are some maybe during the rest of the program, the graduation issue, so we are open for questions at this point.
Very nice. Comments from the board? Mr. Board.
George, you wanna go?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mason, right, correct? Focus first on high school. First of all, Mr. So, now I'm going to go to those one, that's very creative. It's difficult, I mean, at age group two, in line. For summer school that you've recommended, you know, your staff, yeah, like, and. Did you do a survey?
I did a survey with teachers, so I can share a little bit about themselves.
Oh, after, you want to email us?
Sure.
Or do you want to talk about it?
I can talk about it.
Okay, whatever it means.
Okay, and so, we had a total of forty-six teachers that applied for summer school, and of the forty-six teachers I surveyed, and one of the questions in my survey was, if we were to offer in-person instruction, would you still consider working this summer? So, the response to that was, frankly, of the forty-three teachers, I got forty-three responses from forty-six teachers that I communicated the survey to. Of the forty-three, all of them communicated, communicated that they were not interested in returning, and that's, that pretty much is just shy of thirty percent of the teachers. And so, that would lead me a great void with trying to recruit additional teachers. So, those were some of the factors that we're taking into consideration as we're trying to balance, because we all understand the value of in-person instruction, there's no question about it, but we're also trying to navigate greater student access to recovery opportunities, so those are some of the reasons, also that survey that led to us making this recommendation at this point.
We'll both agree that distance learning is not the best of the time. Thank you for that, thank you for your survey too. Do you have a look into doing an A and PM summer school? In on, I'm sorry, in-person?
So, I can speak to that. Logistically, a summer school requires sixty hours of seat time for students over the course of twelve instructional days. So, that's a five-and-a-half-hour school day for a student that's in person. That's part of our policy. So, logistically, that would require a teacher, I mean, it would be substantial.
I'm sorry, I did something wrong, I mean, that's really, sorry.
And so, logistically, it would not be feasible for the district to offer an A and PM summer school.
But you only use what fifteen percent of the year?
Excuse me?
When you say, let's say you're using totally high school for summer school, you only use fifteen percent or twenty percent of the year? And it comes from classroom, it turns out you got to entire class, you're not using it all the time.
Or at least we use the wing, twenty-five classrooms.
Typically, when it comes to an A, when it comes to PM, there's usually different shifts. Can you follow my reasoning here? They're using classrooms to reach. Because I, I struggle, I, I might be wrong, that if we offer in-person, I'm sorry, in-person instruction, then we'll get more kids for summer school. Now, obviously, you're struggling with teachers, and I get that, but I'm also the philosophy, if you give them more money, they will come. That's kind of my philosophy. I might be wrong about that, I just kind of see that a lot of teachers like to make direct folks in summer, that too, maybe a little more offset, maybe a trip down the road or something like that. So, again, if you, like, if you're custodians, though, you're working, might see a little more incentive. If we're to a split-eyed camp, PM, or just a regular in-person, I think you'd probably get more teachers possibly, more students involvement in that. I do understand the construction, but it's okay, it's less than what I had.
That is correct, although the footprint of our high schools or the facilities and use stuff like that, that's not the primary reason why we're.
I thought you mentioned construction as a solid.
It is at one high school, so that is a factor, but that's just not the sole factor, that I can, contributing factor to, to our, to, I wouldn't name factors.
Right, I read them all over, valid. And the other thing is, is that it's used to be focused for credit recovery, which is important. I'm not gonna deny that, but also, what about the kids that want to take some extra classes to get ahead? What about some of the parents that like to see their kids go to school in person? And get some, take US history or whatever, and they feel like they've missed out this year? And DL is just, you know, not gonna happen for them, didn't make them that for centuries. So, it's kind of a thought on my part, situation. And again, I get back to, to the model of, you know, we can get more teachers to be, but that's, you're not, that's not my position. So, we talked about that, survey never really went to the parents or students, but it.
It just went to the teachers, just the teachers.
And then, I think that's about it, I, I, I like what you're doing, I think we can offer both, DL and an in-person. I think we can do both personally, so that's a point that I, I feel very strongly about. And then, on the middle school, elementary, I thought you were very creative. Is any of that gonna be on campus, though? Because it's just all gonna be online.
The elementary will be, will be on campus, only virtual, elementary component would be the elevator math.
Okay, very good, and then the middle school on campus?
Middle schools will be on campus with the exception of the elevator coding program.
Those are my questions, those are my concerns, thank you very much for your cooperation in listening to my question.
Just a follow-up to Mr. Ford's question, do we have an enrollment now for high school? We get, and where are we, are we sold out, or are we higher than in previous years? So, I'm really gonna count on loading our summer school classrooms to forty-six students. That's been past practice, so that is something that I'm gonna really, you know, gonna have to do this year again. And so, offering the distance learning model would really afford for us to be able to learn classrooms to those numbers. And it's, I know it doesn't sound like a normal number, it's something that's out there, but in the summer school world, we have an attrition that happens frequently, the first day, second day, then we have kids that never show, so some of you have probably thought summer should be more, and I'm quite familiar with that. And so, we have to be as proactive as possible in planning to maximize opportunities for students. So, we really count on loading our classrooms to that forty-six number. And we did that last year, distance learning, and we did it in-person in the past. This year, with the restrictions and the safety protocols in place, so that if we do offer any kind of in-person, that would just, we would have to reduce the number of students that we would have in the classroom, and with the shortage of teachers that we currently have already, we would essentially be minimizing opportunities for students across the district. That's, that's something that, you know, my students can't afford at this moment, so.
For the fourteen sixty-one students that you have for semester one, how many of those spots are taken, I think? Do you have one thousand four hundred and sixty-one students slots available for semester one?
How many are enrolled?
That's our, how many are signed up, they're working world?
Yes.
That's involved right now.
And we still have approximately a few more weeks before the registration deadline closes, so as we get closer to the end of the school year, there's gonna be a greater urgency for students to sign up. So, how many more slots do you have to leave? Many teachers are willing to apply, so we're willing to make as none, as enough room as possible for our summer school. I can show you the, today, and I can give you direction that we have the funding to provide the needs and the resources necessary for our students to enroll in summer school. And so, we will continue to bring in as many students as we can, and in placement accordingly, designing the teachers to offer those standards. So.
But you still have, okay, so you have four positions left to be filled. So, you're, you're giving fifty positions total, forty-six students per teacher?
Correct. So. And we still, that's not as appealing, that's an approximation, we can still go higher if there's a student demand that increases.
Okay, so you're hoping to get twenty-three hundred students personally?
If, not all subject matters are created equal, some subject matters have less demand than others, but, you know, if, if it runs at full capacity, that, those would be the numbers that we'll be working with. But potentially, you know, we can, we're very flexible with our summer school. The demand of students that enroll in less summer school will determine the size of summer school, and that's kind of my goal this year.
Okay, very good, thank you. Other comments from the board, Mr. David?
Thank you, Mr. Freitas, let's talk, uh, let's just go, uh, but. Why don't you go ahead and tell us how that's gonna be broken down? What, what, what's gonna, are the kids gonna be doing in summer school?
So, summer school is comprised of three concentrations, with a focus in English, Language Arts, Math, and Science. So, the recruitment of teachers for our summer school is coming with the focus of English, Language Arts, Math, and Science, so the kids are gonna have an opportunity to, to attend, or at least participate in extended block periods with a focus on project-based learning in any of these subjects. Teacher, elementary teachers hired for summer school will be attending a P specifically designed for the summer school instruction, and that's being put together by our coaches.
Excellent. What grades is it gonna be?
As of today, we're offering elementary summer school to grades first through six.
One through six, okay. And, can I say, the six teachers per grade that did, at this point, seven to twenty students? And we got thirty-six teachers, so and we're, we're looking at twenty, twenty-eight per class, that, that's the. I think we're gonna have to look outside of boxes, it's just not impacting thirty-two students percentage-wise. Maybe we need to look at some alternatives to the traditional model. Maybe we might need to incorporate some online learning there, maybe there is some programs that are already available. Yeah, it is. We got, here's the thing, if, if we could fix this point, we would need less summer school. We can do something about these kids early on. And it's gonna affect them for the entire time, so. A little disappointed in the summer school, not you, you've done a great job. But a little disappointed that we're not placing more emphasis on these one-grade schools. It's been extremely, you know, we say it's been tough on it, but it's been extremely tough this year on some of our quarterbacks. Okay, I'm afraid of all of them now, hope I'm wrong. Your tests are gonna come up here and show me I'm wrong about it. I think we need to look at that much harder. Also, we were distributing it, the first six should be concentrated on the upper brackets or learning the reach, and put more of it there, which you're doing is the fair way, okay, get that. But should we put emphasis more on what we've got the biggest problem? So, this is a great start, guys, I really appreciate it, I'd like to see us be able to do more. I'd like to see us be able to impact more children. So, if we can take a look at that, let me know about that, I would really appreciate it. Oh, we're looking at expanding, you know, that's, in general. I will say, we need to spend more time. We need to talk about student achievement more, right, it's not happening, and I understand why, I mean, not just having anybody over this, because it's been a tough year for everyone, but we need to spend some time, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. David, other comments from the board?
Just that, one comment, whole day, you've done everything possible, this summer school levels, and you have a lot of strengths, and I understand them, number one, the teachers. I mean, you have to have enough teachers in order for you to have the students participate in them, especially at the high school level. You have all these, you know, you have thirty-six hundred students that are applying for that, and it's almost impossible to go, I, I'm more in-person, I'm more in-person, and I would, my thoughts were maybe we should lower the enrollment down and, and or, not lower it, but all of it to different other sites, and get these, these teachers maybe in those areas. They would do it that way, located here in OCA or in the Doma, those types of construction. Let's get back there, let's get, uh, Berry Creek, and let's get even the middle school can be used for secondary level, so I, I know you have a lot of strengths, but I know you're doing everything possible, and I hope that we can serve these students to the maximum to get attention, like, the elementary is important, because that's the foundation of our education, but let's take it open to credit recovery in the high schools and those people that been, uh, been really, had any challenges, both, just give an example of something, you know, if I started their, their hybrid education, teaching one of the schools. She was telling me that she has ten students, and I was ten, or have never, she's never seen before in this school or anything. They come because of the socialization and all that, it was pretty difficult, would you guys enjoy trying to put together? I said, I believe it, but let's, let's try and offer these students the best that we can in summer school, and get them all, get something, you know?
Thank you, other, other comments from the board?
Yes, it does. Mr. So, I just have a quick question about. Is that an option?
Expect, and certain can opt out. School districts are strongly encouraged not to suggest the opt-out.
If it's related to funding, if, if they love that.
I saw numbers several days ago, three to four hundred, I believe.
That was checked, or it was told?
Uh, told.
And I guess we're not gonna expect much from this in terms of diet and. Well, we, I think we can stay.
It's hard to tell, I can't. Some students, it will be spot-on valid, others not.
You know, where can we go next year, right, based on what we did this year, and now, it's just difficult.
It's definitely a challenge, yes.
Yeah, and then, I wanted to talk with Mr. real quick, Scott, you did an awesome job. I want my dog, but I'd like it with you, sort of, with the dog, but I'm watching these teachers have a side track with socialists and seniors, trying to beat my, my herd cat, and I don't think you want to, pretty much, but, um, he, I. I'll send it to you, I will see if you can, I did it, it's unbelievable, I'm glad, I'm appreciative.
All right, other comments from the board, Mr. David?
I'm glad to see that there's gonna be more options for the students than for the families. I'm just wondering how it's all gonna be done together. We were talking about elementary, middle school, high school, elevator math. That brings me to, you know, how do we get the word out, do we market it out? You were saying that elevator math, basically, this week. People are buying their summers. People are buying their summers, and you you can't advertise that there's nothing there. So why, I mean, I get that, but I could need a teacher.
Well, the elevating math is, um, fortunate that it is the fourth year.
Yes.
We have a high return rate, that's pretty well, their families are already looking forward and, um, expecting. Um, the the elementary, so far, we've gone based upon the, um, teacher recommendations, the number, I'll mention, we have recommendations for the seven hundred or so seats. After tonight, now that we have, um, some correction, and we've been increasing teachers, hopefully getting more teachers, um, recruit more teachers. We will pull on, uh, make direct contact with those families to invite them. Uh, the the middle school, we're gonna start to put up flyers and notifications directed at families and teachers as well, so they get it right in the hands of students. Uh, starting late this week, and we'll start, um, we also, tomorrow, we'll be posting some positions for those assignments, so. Everything's really starting to launch right now, uh, it was important to demonstrate, uh, that the teachers would, um, hopefully we'll get some more teachers on board with that agreement. So we're ready to, ready to launch most programs, though, our board is out. Uh, it's kind of the middle school one, it's really the last to formulate, um, but the communication hasn't been going out, and it'll be hard to start tomorrow.
And I really do like the elevating math, I mean, I always thought that math is kind of a gateway or hindrance for kids, and so, just like they need to be able to read and write, they also need to do math. And second, really, teach them where and how.
All right, thank you, I guess we'll hold on and see how it all comes together quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, any other comments on the board? Comments from the public?
Good to hear again, and, uh, I think Mr. Sully addressed it a little bit with his last comments. Um, I would hope with the passage of the the M O U, that, um, hopefully, when you bring the two thousand nineteen, twenty contract, that you might have more teachers, um, stepping up, um, to teach summer school. Uh, there have been many asks from middle school teachers, um, they get them for that short window, as you, um, Trina, um, Taylor talked about, that two-year window. I hope that, um, we got some middle school teachers that talked about, as those sixth graders roll up, you know, that bridge, so. Maybe if there is a middle school bridge, um, recommendations for those students rolling up to middle school. Um, I would hope that we would first ask middle school teachers to teach our summer school for our middle school. I think that's important, and giving them that opportunity, so maybe, um, having Jose maybe resurvey the teachers, knowing that with the approved M O U, will you have more buy-in? I also think it's important, this comes up every summer, the number of high school students in our summer school class. So if you were to put a cap on that, because that English teacher in a short window is reading essays, and when you've got over thirty, um, over a regular, uh, size, that's very difficult in a short summer school window. So maybe if you looked at capping some of the high school courses to a lower class size for summer school, there might be more interested teachers willing to step up, um, to do that. Um, with, um, the, I think Mr., um, Neely talked about it, the elementary program and the middle school program not maybe necessarily being a regimented, um, program, that's something that was high interest. I also know that in the grants and what the governor talked about was a lot of social emotional. And I think bringing on those components to summer school is gonna be important. I know there is a big difference between those that want to do in-person live and distant learning. And as we are hearing, many students want to be back in the classroom, so these protocols with distant learning in high school, we were doing smaller. And as Mr. Napa pointed out, giving the opportunities at a variety of sites where more students could, it was closer to home. So maybe it's closer for their parents to allow them and say, hey, I apply into this, it's close to my neighborhood school. So I hope that we kind of reevaluate it now with the M O U passing, and hopefully, um, the contract coming up, the teachers will feel, um, willing to extend themselves more, um, over summer. I am very concerned about that July date, and as many of you know, tearing down a classroom and putting it back up takes time, and, um, we understand with cleaning, that will have to happen over a period of time. So is there, you know, kind of moving that? I had never thought about an A and P M that is reported around. Um, but I know our athletes might be interested in that if they're doing sports that they could do in the afternoon, so. Maybe relooking at some of those new ideas going forward with the M O U, um, and surveying our teachers. But we also feel it is vitally important to survey our families and their interest in D L at each of the different grade levels. And again, advocating for middle school to do summer school, and maybe at six, seven, eight, um, as they move up, um, to seventh grade, getting that new exposure to new stuff, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Sergeant Shaw, can you tell us your vote?
All right.
Very good. Uh, Dr. Warshur.
Thank you, and your staff, uh, obviously, it was very, very important that we get these, uh, first instructions back in place and, you know, the reports. Or if they tell us they're gonna be expected, and, um, our kids love it, and we're amazingly successful. Uh, like I was joking earlier, if our goal is to be better than Amazon Prime, that's true, I'm good. And, uh, I I think this community demanded it, and I'm so glad that we're delivering it. I'm also glad to see that we do have strategies in place, different working force, uh, summer school, because that's very important for all of our students also. So thank you everyone for the one report, uh, thank you for the great work you're doing, and, uh, you know, can't wait to see what y'all are gonna do, and thank you very, very much. Uh, we have two more report items, both of them are going to be the subject of a study session on maybe, can you kindly, Dr. Warshur, is that correct?
Um, I'm sorry.
Maybe just a little studies.
Uh, we have the Extended Learning Opportunities Grant that will be on the study session, um. Please keep in mind that that is due, we have to turn that in before June one. So, uh, that's why we've been putting it on the agenda. We also will probably, sorry, have to ask you for another special board meeting between the study session and June one for you to actually approve it.
A special board meeting seems to be, I'm, so.
Sorry.
Maybe, yeah, maybe there's, I'm sorry, maybe it is.
So maybe just hold, uh, the twenty-fifth open on your calendars, um, for that, um. If you want that, Mr. Sully, to go through.
I absolutely positive you don't want to go through the presentation, where at ten-thirty at night, we didn't get a report in hours, so, um.
Can we ask Dr. Sully what is critical, or the critical aspect?
That is what I would like to do. Unless we're able to get it.
Uh, briefly then, the the L C A, uh, report on here is simply a follow-up to recall, we have a study session approximately a month ago on L C A. Uh, you had asked for some additional detail on the actions relating to costs and staffing. And that's been provided, uh, and color-coded, and the reason for color-coding it again was that, um, based upon the color-coding was the issue related to it, such as if it's a restricted fund, uh, I can use special, that is an example. We we can't really make any changes to that in the first place. Um, and other issues, uh, there's one that's color-coded for staffing. We're at a point in the year where staffing changes are, were being extremely difficult, especially with certificate, so. This, um, attachment in the L C A report is simply for your additional information you requested. Uh, at the study session, the board gave direction to continue with existing L C A missions and increase intervention services and S C L services, which we are seeking to do by adding some positions in the, uh, elementary, uh, intervention teaching realm, as well as, uh, maintaining some constant positions and social emotional support positions. So we are competing with those, uh, corrections. The only other point here would be that if you so chose to choose to make any other changes in the L C A, really, we fall in the unshaded areas of this attachment. Uh, yet, some of those would be extremely difficult to make changes there as well, because up on the first page is Abbott, that would be programmatic changes at high school, which would be a difficult thing. The only reason it's not shaded is it's not required, we have that, so that's the rationale behind this document, so. This is just for additional support, the L C A item will come twice to you in June, the first June meeting as first reading by, um, head code that we need to bring it along with our fine budget in the second June. So you'll see that L C A will be up again. Any questions or concerns about what we provided here, if you back up? We're able to answer those at this time.
First, thank you, Dr. Sully, any questions for Dr. Sully on the L C A report that we have, and should have. Any comments from the public, or questions from the public?
Dr. Sully, I think, uh, the color coding was a great idea, and I think that's very helpful for us. And, uh, I think, uh, we will have your questions, uh, we either direct them to you or, uh, we will let you have a go on the eighteen, that's it.
Thank you, appreciate it, and actually, my last comment on this is that the way that L C A is calendar and structured by C D guidance, really, for for large changes that would involve staffing or other programmatic pieces, we need to be talking about the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three changes now. These are kind of standard. So if you do have ideas where you would like to see some changes, both need to come now and until fall and early into the winter, and we can make those changes this time.
Bring it to the eighteen study session?
Yes.
Very good, any other comments on the board, and Dr. Warshur, you were saying, uh, about an additional meeting, do you need that tonight, or did that just surprise?
Um, the additional meeting would be after the study session, so, um, we're asking you to hold May twenty-fifth open. That would be for you to approve the Extended Learning Opportunities Grant, which we have to turn in by June one.
But speaking of, Dr. Warshur, there also will be the possibility, were we to approve what was in place on the eighteen, and there were no changes to it, we could maybe just do it at that, I mean, we'll have a special May next class study session for the extended learning.
Correct, Mr. Francis, we could, uh, make the agenda so that you have the option of doing that. In case you're ready to do that, we just don't want it back in the corner that you have to do it on that.
That didn't make sense, that was my question.
Okay, okay, we will do that.
So it's, say, say, essentially, with the option to approve the grant, state as.
So you will see that in action item on the agenda, but please know that if you're not ready to do that, you don't have to do it.
I may just tell that, and of course, it's very difficult, we don't do it in back of this, like, building this.
If I may, um, go briefly to the yellow report, do, Mr., do you have a little question on it?
I'm sure we're in, and it's basically about high school graduation ceremony. Uh, so, how's that going? I, I, you had a quick conversation, and it's, it seems a little hinky with the regulations that we're trying to follow, that all could change, and the tiers of, like, things.
If it's okay, Mr. Francis, if we could maybe just go back to the other.
The first report item?
Yes, is that okay? Thank you, uh, yes, we can address, um, our current plans and answer any questions. I, to start off, I, I do want to commend and thank Mr. Khan for his creative, problem-solving, solution-oriented approach. This has been, um, a daunting task, as I'm sure you know, with all the regulations, uh, and all the health orders that we have to follow. Our goal has been to have a in-person, an in-person, uh, graduation for as many guests as possible, under the health orders, in our, uh, had to have all of our students, the whole class graduate together. I think that, uh, what folks may be hearing from other districts is they're getting more, uh, tickets. They're also splitting up the graduating class and holding different ceremonies. And, um, we know from our school sites that the priority has been for students to stay together and be together as a class. So, um, Mr. Pomquist is prepared to give you an overview, um, of what our plans are, and I want to thank Mr. Pomquist and, uh, the high school principals as well for their diligence in doing what, uh, is going to be decent for students and most appropriate and still follow the health orders. So Mr. Pomquist, a brief overview.
I can, starting to bring that up, and this is a very emotional subject for a lot of people, basically, everybody who has a senior.
Sure.
So that's why I thought, if there's something we need to do, and talk about, we need to.
Fair, and I can do this in less than thirty minutes.
Great, now, oh, please, you have at least three minutes.
Yeah, thank you. If we can present, great, as members of the board, I think Dr. Warshur really did, uh, some of it well. When working with sites, Mr. Collins, several departments are involved when you're working on a team to drive and, with guidance, uh, to the site, running ceremony. There were three guiding principles, one, in-person live ceremony, they've heard that since last year, since this time last year, for Mr. Hudson. We're saying that we need an in-person live ceremony, have kids deserve it, everybody, like, for ease. And, uh, because of that, it's important that we make sure we have a facility that we can do it in, district-run facility is very important. Also, we were given guidance from the Department of Public Health under ceremonies and graduations specifically related to these ceremonies. And some of that guidance, that's a really nice deal, all the other guidance we had, and just like some of the other pieces. Some of them, though, we play, that's nice with each other. Those are the things we have to do for in-person ceremony. With our, the consensus from all side, who did work with their committees and their governments, I was that they wanted one ceremony where the entire class could be together, right? Part, so long, and in the moment, we could wear the whole class to be together, and the students said, we want that. We really love that, and the final priority was access, because many people see this as possible. And so we were entering into agreement with the county office of it, the live streaming of graduation. We don't just have to four comprehensive, four notes, or publicly, not that we, we all, nine graduations are running to live streaming agreement, so that we can have a, provide that for everyone. And then, we needed to figure out a way, under the red tier, Dr. Warshur gave us an extra challenge, so that way we could look at what the requirements would, would have. Realized, uh, we're gonna have a guest, you know? And that being, we need to get to at least two, two guests per year, under the red tier, we needed a way to do that, and I think that's what she was referring to, and Mr. Khan, working with, and other, you know, uh, all the different guidelines, uh, you know, arc of thirty, largest venue that we could hold this, what do I say, a ceremony, this, uh, largest in the city. Twenty percent is favorite, twenty-two people. One thing that folks don't necessarily understand is that the graduates count for that. The right three class of four hundred and thirty, subtracted from the eight hundred and twenty-two that we've been having in the city. And so the, in order to increase access, that we're proof of testing, or proof of vaccination option, um, was offered as a way to increase the capacity. Ultimately, in order to, you know, get to guests for those graduates, we need to reduce the number of people who come to the university. And so that's, that's what the red tier, I think generates a lot of angst for folks, because they, you know, have we said they don't have as many people's. they said they don't have as many people's talk on there. We are, uh, there's no leeway. Twenty percent must be the only way to create order. So that's really what was, uh, determined there. I think we've talked more about, uh, P D Hs or some of the other guidance, but really that's in a nutshell three priorities to pull off at live in person graduation, full class, and increase access.
Additional questions for that on the back to?
Okay.
So we're following, this is a word. Yeah, California Department of Health.
Yes, they put out a specific guidance for graduation.
Um, which is fully, yeah. Why couldn't we look at three more?
Why didn't we look at three more? Um, we'll look for smaller capacity than survey. Yeah, I think that's actually, you can't be utilized and it is, yeah, the information that came from the city was that it was approximately eight hundred, so maybe go to nine hundred and two. Um, so I think it's important to get that out. Yeah, and, and part of it too, but again, because the priority was to make sure we could have a live in person ceremony. We need to follow this facility. Mr. Khan, uh, and like, you know, we, we had lots of stuff about that. Because if we control the facility, we're not subject to the first parties. Maybe rules or regulations that impact them. We've seen that with both the policies and the permitting that would then differ from the regulations in the U. And so that impacts our programs. Can you answer my question?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Ponquist. Thank you, Mr. Eric for bringing that up. And, uh, anyway, if we could get more than one.
Oh, with two.
We, we got to make that happen. Very good. Thank you. All right. Uh, moving back to the report item, I believe we have one last report item, which is our extended learning opportunity grant. Dr. Sally is going to tell us what we need to do. Thank you, sir. Um, we, the expanded learning grant.
I should miss that. Dr. Sayoff, he very disturbed.
Yeah, in fact, Dr. Sayoff threw a lot of work, he's, uh, who we cite himself. Uh, the grant is, refers to the nineteen point some odd number of dollars, Mr. Khan. Just trying to correct anyone. It's about nineteen point four million, um, for expanded learning. Um, there are, uh, seven all over uses. And we have consulted with our, uh, stakeholder groups, our community groups, our party groups and such. And we are asked by the state to provide a plan. It's very brief. It, uh, is unlike any grant that I've ever done in the past where there's a rulework to follow and, um, much more details asked for. Uh, in this grant, given that, um, we still are, are formulating our response in some of these areas regarding the extended time or, or the aspects of a community learning center. The grant is being written very open-ended to include all of the options on the table without the specifics of, and typical grants, and this staff member will do that service at this time. It's much more open-ended. Um, the, the, again, there's no rulework to measure it again, so state, uh, is basically just wants to know what we intend to do. It will certainly falling under audits. We certainly would make sure we do our due diligence there and, and spend the money appropriately. But, uh, the, the, the grant, as Dr. Washer mentioned, is due first, so we will have a study session and happy to entertain any questions prior to that or that night. Uh, there's, there's attachment area and several attendments that you prove between now and then and, um, if you answer questions, either it's between now and then or tonight. Very good. Other than comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Uh, Dr. Sally and Dr. Sayoff. We know this is an amazing amount of work and, and especially in addition to all of your other responsibilities. We can't thank you about what you're doing. And, uh, uh, our kids are back and forth, so anything that we can capture that, that is always we know that you're doing pretty well. Does our somebody have the, the public?
Yes, we have one, uh, near us, Lowery.
Good. Here?
Um, yeah. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. You have a comment on the?
Oh. Yes. Okay, so, um, I had attended the community meeting. And one of the questions on the questionnaire was for high school students and parents, if we would like to add a, an additional class. Um, and my thought on that was if we can change our high schools to a block schedule like McNair has and offer it to the rest of our high schools, then our high schoolers will have eight classes instead of the proposed seven. And that would give them a much better chance at graduating at the end of their high school career. So if you guys could think about it, mull it over, um, I just think that the way that we have our high school, um, schedule set up right now, our high schoolers can only fail one class. So if we can give them a little bit wider road, um, I think that they could have a much better chance of success. Thank you.
Very, thank you very much for that. Pretty interesting idea, and there is a lot of success with a block scheduling there. And, uh, the idea of starting that round, uh, we got something the board will, uh, will take up and look at. So thank you very much for, uh, contributing to our meeting. All right. Uh, anything else on the, uh, grant, Dr. Sally, Dr. Sayoff? Okay, uh, with that, we will move on to our agenda for communication from employing, uh, group representatives. I see Dean and Michelle have been waiting patiently. They are going to arm wrestle to see who wins. Dean wins. Well, it's a debate. How do you?
President Francis, Dr. Washer, members of the board.
He's named. Especially at forty-one.
Um, on behalf of these old nurses and speechlike pathologists, I'm thanking for your recognition of those services. I've already passed some of these along to them via text. And I'll be seeing if they, that they get around to them. Uh, it's got to be me. Uh, in a previous meeting, I talked to you about, uh, L P P A having two one thousand dollar scholarships going up to, uh, literally even by high school students going up to college and needing, uh, assistance going into fields that were represented by L P P A. At that time, we had one candidate and we, you know, pitched it here at the school board and we expanded our, our window of application. Uh, we now have nine people have applied. There was two spots that were replaced with that. Judgment is going to be happening very soon, so I'm looking to announce those winners in a very future. Um, I did, I didn't talk about, uh, when the last time we came out, but we were talking about the effort that I committed to, if y'all put it to getting schools back open again. And I had said that, uh, you know, thanks for the appreciation, but the work is far from that. Lots to do. Uh, Mr. Nate, you expressed that today. I'm hoping to really get into the nuts and bolts of presentation on the extended learning opportunities grant. Um, there are some things in here that I, I read through and I'm really excited to see where we go with that. Uh, one in particular being a, a school psychologist working in the world of special education. On page two, there's some comments about the district focusing on free interventions to support mitigating learning loss due to distance learning, uh, and making sure that our students are not identified with, or suspect that having learning disabilities do some difference or not. Due to the last year, uh, just this year, my parent requests for testing have expanded about threefold. People are concerned, children are, are struggling. Grandma knows, you guys know this, you spent a lot of time talking about it. So I really decided to see where this goes, um, to, to the rubber on the road. But know that, that we have our resources for you and we want to work together with you to help remediate those issues. Uh, I used to be a part of the professional, I wrote that here. I was in an environment that, that worked at traders that was kind of spearheaded by Dan, Diana Brink, right? And what she would say is that, um, when you're working with a student, you've got to kind of get down to the level and say something along the lines of, what can we do to help us solve our problem? And it really brings the focus back to all of us working together. Getting, you know, acknowledging the problem is not mine, it's not yours, it's not theirs. It's all of ours. We can all work together. Uh, so I'm again looking forward to see how the rubber piece is throughout here. Finally, L P P A is returning to the negotiation table next week after developing three M O Us. And we, uh, would like to thank Susan for coming short on our, our meetings in the past. Um, if any of the rest of you would like to join our party. We'll come down. But in general, we're going to get ready for negotiations or looking into, to meetings here. We all hope for the best. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Um, first of all, thank you for the proclamation tonight and recognizing. And, um, may the fourth be with you as, um, all of us and our geeks and Star Wars fans and happy birthday to you, um, Mr. Nava. Um, on National Day of Teacher. Um, we kicked off, um, our teacher appreciation uh, by one of our members holding a five K. You may have heard about Isaiah Stowers, uh, Delta, uh, Sierra first school teacher who organized the event. Uh, there were over a hundred and thirty participants. Um, they started the run here at the district office, some of them, and ran to Delta Sierra. Um, there were, uh, groups throughout town, here in Lowak and Stockton that ran five K. And I understand in other states to, um, support, uh, teachers and bring recognition and get us out and active. Um, I also want to recognize that a portion of those raised fees are going to be a donation to the God Kids Foundation. And so I would just like to recognize Isaiah Stowers and, and his family and all of the teachers and friends that participated in that. It is a good cause to get us out and out, but also to support God Kids. And with this being Day of the Teacher, National Day of the Teacher, um, I just want to recognize my fellow teachers that they have worked through this very challenging year, keeping students at the center of what they do. And this National Day of the Teacher before, we celebrate everything that they've done to get students back in the classroom, to work with their families, work at their sites and in our community. I want to thank you and our teachers for supporting students with the unique needs that have, they have had over this year. I want to thank my counterparts, both L P P A and C S E A as they have recognized the hard work of, um, cleaning facilities and , um, like I said, kids come to school, um, taking care of that. Um, administrators who have supported getting kids to the right place and making sure that sites are safe. So thank you for your support. Um, we hope with continued, um, dialogue that we come to a resolution on two thousand nineteen, twenty. But we recognize the achievement. And, uh, as I think someone said, turning on a dime, when they hand you a quarter. I love that phrase. I think, um, your employees, your teachers, um, this last year have done an amazing job. If anyone would have thought we'd be educating students digitally and then coming back and doing virtual and live at the same time. Um, it is exhausting, as some people have pointed out, but they are doing it. And I thank you for the recognition of the work they're doing about the M O U and your proclamation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. This is a very special National Day of the Teacher. We got all of that. Uh, I believe, uh, uh, already the C S A would like to address the board, did I leave, uh, on, uh, virtually? Is that correct? How you doing?
Uh, good evening, President Fadis, members of the board and Superintendent Washer. Uh, my name's Kyle Ha- Harvey, and I haven't seen a lot of you in person for quite some time, but, uh, we ha- I have been watching and listening to you and all of the other, uh, outstanding professionals in the, in the district, uh, tonight and, and, and earlier, of course, in other board meetings. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Randy Cordavis, who couldn't be here. Our chapter president is on some personal leave this week. And he asked me to stand in and, and just, uh, speak to a few things that are important to, uh, C S E A and we believe the students and community. Uh, one of the things I'd just like, uh, fi- uh, ask, um, and I mistakenly thought that I could speak to some of these items by raising my hand, but uh, your outstanding, uh, technician, Michael Hunting, sent me straight and told me that I needed to sign a card earlier for each of those items, but I had a couple of questions. I don't expect them to be answered right now. Um, C S E A supports, strongly supports the, uh, memorandum of understanding that, uh, the district and L E A, uh, reached regarding, uh, their impacts and effects of the workload and incentives to make sure that they are, uh, people available this summer who have worked tirelessly all, all year long and are tired and, uh, even though they, uh, they want to continue to serve students, they're just, they are really worn out. But on that item, it was a, a, a settlement of compensation. And I did not see an A B twelve hundred report. I'm not sure if that was just an oversight or the district will plan, plans on doing that. But I know normally when we have agreements that A B twelve hundred reports are sent out as a, uh, to the county office. Um, next, I'd like to talk a little bit about summer school. And I, we have a little concern that the classified staffing, uh, was not addressed in just the overview. Uh, if it was, there was very little, uh, that I, that we saw, um. And a lot of the funds that you've received to provide those extended learning opportunities are restricted to, uh, provide para-professionals with uh, extra hours, uh, expanded, uh, uh, professional development and pay uh, as a part of the grants that you're receiving. So we want to make sure that we don't lose, uh, track of that. Um, I believe, uh, personally, and I can't speak on totally on behalf of my members, but, you know, we did hurry to get back to in-person learning, which was I think, uh, in everybody's best interests, even though it, uh, did take a lot of stressful, uh, decisions to make that. Uh, I believe it was the right decision. Uh, however, I don't think that having summer school and continuing distance learning in that mode is something that's going to be beneficial, uh, to the students. We would like to support, uh, onsite learning, uh, for, uh, our students as much as possible. If we can get enough teachers to sign up and we have incentives for our folks uh, to come in and support them, I know that you'll have enough workers to get the job done. And, uh, wanted to also uh, congratulate everyone on the incredible work this year. All, uh, groups, management, confidential, teachers. We all pitched in. We did what we needed to do. It was all hands on deck when we had to be there. We did it. And, uh, everyone should be congratulated. Everyone is a veteran of, of a real war. And that war was on COVID nineteen. And all of us are going to live with this the, the rest of our, our lives, but everyone who works in schools and were there in person should really be, uh, uh, congratulated. and were there in person should really be uh, uh, congratulated. Uh, and we had, we did make mistakes at the beginning. No doubt, uh, we didn't have the PPE that we wanted, but you know, classified employees, we complained, but we still came into work. Maybe we had to bring our own PPE or find ways to uh, to make ourselves safe, safe, and and we did our best. But we knew that as things changed, uh, the one thing constant was that it was daily, it was weekly, it was monthly, changes. And we all accepted it in the mission to uh, serve our students. And even though uh, our members uh, became infected, uh, um, really disabled by this terrible disease, uh, they were quarantined, they were sickened. Uh, they came to work when that when that was over and they continued. You know, some of our folks had multiple exposures to COVID nineteen. And they still came in. So please, when you see them out there in your travels around the district, please thank them. Our nutrition services folks, our custodians, they were there every day, weekends, whatever it took. And they took those chances to serve you and the students and community. And you know, that's that's their mission. It's to improve the lives of the students, the community, and our members. That's our CSCA uh, mission, and we live by that every every day. Um, you know, our workload and safety issues continue. You heard a few of those tonight. But I want to tell you, I receive calls and emails every day from CSCA members who are concerned about their future and the ability to support their families. You know, they are exhausted, and I know teachers and administrators are exhausted as well. You know, I ask you to go out and visit the kitchens, the school offices, the special education classroom because they want to be recognized by you for their service. And seeing them in person and a thank you would be very much appreciated. I got a call yesterday from a custodian. He walks three miles, three miles from six AM to seven AM every morning just to get set up. And these, this is not normal, walking three miles around a small school site. So these are the incredible sacrifices that are still going on. For instance, so this custodian can set up tables so our students can eat safely. And this is all while we're understaffed. He's doing this and he's pushing on, he's pushing through. Please push through for them. We we need your vision. We need a vision that says, our classified employees are worth more than minimum wage. We need that. We need them to understand that they are valued, and when their own children can go out and get a job that pays seventeen fifty an hour to start, and they are have a administrative degree and they, excuse me, uh, AA degree as a para, and they're starting out barely above minimum wage. This is the world that, and the vision that has been created, and we need to change that in the in the district. This is, this uh, emergency has bared open the weakness of not addressing the wages and benefits for years and years in a fair and uh, and dignified manner. Um, we, we worked hard, all of all of us, to make sure there was funding this year to address all of the issues that came up. And now we have the the horrible and difficult task to spend this money correctly. Because it is terrifying. If we don't get this right, if we do not have all hands on deck and that all hands are valued as we try to catch these students up, we're gonna be in trouble. Twenty-one resignations tonight from CSCA. Last board meeting, fourteen resignations. There are sixty openings on Edjoin right now for classified. That is, and and that is so horrible to think. We had to actually, the district had to contract out LVN work because we don't have enough LVNs in the district to do the work that's necessary. We can't let that go on. We're gonna let it go on for a couple of months, as you have the right to do, but next year, we gotta have these positions filled. We have to make a determination with our contract agreements and our incentive agreements that the classified service is as as important to the learning of students as any other educator. That's a lot of resignations. I don't know how uh, Amber and Mike are gonna fill those. They're, they throw their hands up when I talk to them. I don't know how we're gonna do it, Kyle. I really don't, you know, and yet they're with, have the task to negotiate with us. Uh, and they're receiving direction from the board. So we really need to address these issues. Now is the time. Uh, we really need to look closely at restructuring the salary schedule so that our members do not have to receive public assistance in order to feed their families and pay their rent, because that is the reality of their situation right now, even under pandemic uh, situations. Many of them still work extra jobs so they can pay their rent. And I I don't want to go on too long, but I really, really want you to support the proposal that I know you reviewed tonight uh, that we provided the district this week in negotiations to support these workers. And also that we have continued meaningful uh, negotiations to provide good uh, wages and benefits for our CSCA workers. Thank you very much, and uh, thank you for your patience in listening.
Thank you, uh, thank you. Comments from board members? Hey, Mr. Board.
Um, this is Sunday. Big day.
Big day.
It's Mother's Day. I want to give a shout out to all the mothers that are out there. Um, my mother was incredible. The first one to graduate with my family to her college. She stayed alive until I get my masters. I want to thank all the mothers everywhere, especially those that are working mothers within our school. I worked in science building, picture rooms, I was one. One of them, the partner of women, we had lunch together. Jungle, all this stuff. I was a dad. But I can say about all the things that they were doing, I go awesome, so all the working mothers out there, awesome, incredible, and the single mothers, how do you do? They, on Sunday, give your mom a call, send her a note to moms in the rooms, thank you, you're awesome. You're the reason why everything works around here. It doesn't happen in the world, within the big rules, it's dark. That's my statement right there. Sunday, they should get adjusted law.
Thank you. I think college from the board.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Uh, like I said, I was glad to talk about student achievement tonight, hoping and uh, I'm very worried now. Uh, Dr. Washer, written an article today that there is a fifty dollar credit, monthly credit for high-speed internet access, part of the vehicle in brown. Applications open up that twelfth of May. One of the things to be eligible for that is to have uh, been awarded reintroduced by the nineteen twenty or twenty twenty-one school year. So I think that we should let, we need to have a program to let everybody know that. Need to get the word out. We need to have resources available. What they're gonna need is a letter from us uh, stating that they're eligible. I think we should start on it right away so that Facebook opens up. Everybody rock and roll.
Thank you, Mr. David. Any comments from the board? Mr. Naba.
Yes, thank you. Chris. Other things. Uh, I know, I'd like to talk, why don't you talk during this one, get more eyes, but I wanted to congratulate the Lowry Girls Golf Team that beat San Berres two eleven to two twenty-nine. And to recognize Amelia Geraldi, she had eagle on the last pole, one thirty-four two hundred far at the Stockton Golf Country Flow. Awesome. Okay? Now, the next point is such an important one because this gentleman graduated from Lowry High School about four years ago, Brad Reeves, you should remember. Brad Reeves, so he's a lower high graduate. He helped the University of Arizona win the Pac-12 Conference Championship. That's the first time since two thousand and four that Arizona University of Tucson has won a conference with Brad. Brad was also the Pac-ten, twelve conference individual title one after two poles a playoff against Stanford. Henry Schip, one of your former school son, uh, Courtney, and uh, and Tiger Woods' whole, by the way, yeah, back with Stanford. Winning the Pac-12 individual title, uh, Reeves places name next to a long time of well-known golfers such as Tiger Woods. Nineteen ninety-six Stanford graduate. And Phil Mickelson, nineteen ninety, Arizona State graduate. If you watch golf, you would appreciate this. If you don't watch golf, thank you. And uh, I know Brad is is uh, trying to make a Canadian tour. And uh, he did make the Q school, a Q school tournament, so he's going to the horny period turn tournament which is right below the PGA. They make money at that, so he's gonna join us next summer, uh, when he graduates. So, congratulations to Brad Reeves, congratulations to the Lowry Girls Golf Team. And they're undefeated right now with a six, a six and O uh, on the PKL, A and O. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Naba, we know we started it and we finished it, and we say the best of the last year, but thank you for other stations, Peter. Any other, any other comments from the board? All right, uh, once again, um, let me put on my D A hat. Kids are walking our streets. They aren't paying attention. So please, everyone, please, everyone be very, very careful in your private and watch out for our kids. They are not watching out for you. And we need to take care of them. Uh, Mr. Naba.
Yes, sir.
And and everyone else, very happy and wonderful to see them. Why don't, uh, tomorrow, the fact that we are only fifty-six cents late. We can stick around for this a little bit longer and start the celebration. But uh, uh, everyone, uh, and have a wonderful time. Uh, Mr. Porter, I'm not for sure. Everyone is down the southern state, you still like thunder, but uh, it was, you very well said the way that you did. Uh, it's Dr. Washer, it's Armstrong, it's Oregon, I used to present in Harlem, four mothers in the room. It is a fact that the reason women carry shoulders to the middle of the restaurant. And uh, I I have to tell you, each and every one of you and all the mothers in our district have a very wonderful day and uh, sons and husbands and fathers, let's not take it there. So have have a wonderful Mother's Day, and very well deserved. And uh, if there's no board advisory committees, there is, uh, this, this. Very good.
Mr. Naba, I actually did a, a talking, uh, I'll do a couple of things. I'm going to introduce each other, date each other, and we're gonna break stage. Yeah, it's our women's, yeah. There's libraries and D J L by next, by my hand. You found there, there's a ground here, stage, and it's almost like an air tap, if you will. And there is going to be a problem, uh, kind of, we, the traffic is problem now, you know, just getting, doing the U-turns and eating. So I know that you will resolve that problem by the time.
All right, uh, we, I know we ran a little bit late tonight. We did, we did, we did. But we, but we did, uh, we did get a lot of this. Uh, sorry, it's very, very, so I thank everyone for their patience and ceremony. We are having a meeting. Y'all fix.